It's one o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atewanerin, the Anshnabe, Wodunshoni, and Lenawpewuk peoples who have longstanding relationships with the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nations community of this area include the Chipewa of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and the Muncie Delaware Nation. We acknowledge the treaties that are specific to this area. Treaty two, which is the McKee Purchase, treaty three, Between the Lakes Purchase, treaty six, the London Township Purchase, treaty twenty-one, Longwoods Purchase, and treaty twenty-nine, the Huron Track Purchase. We value the significant contributions both in the past and the present of local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and we affirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect. I'll look to councillors, are there any disclosures of peculiary interest? I don't see any in that case. We have a motion before us that the agenda be approved, as presented. If I could have a mover, please send a second, councillor Snibird and councillor McMillan. All in favour? And that is carried. Thank you. Okay, and now moving on to the minutes, we have a couple of sets of minutes here. The motion before us is that the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting of county council and the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four closed session of county council be approved as presented, and that the recommendation spot made by committee of the whole as set out in the minutes of the February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, be adopted. Is there a mover, please, and a second or councillor Clark and councillor Mayhew, thank you, all in favour? And that is carried. Okay, we have a couple of things under new business. The first one's a big one. We're going to have a presentation from our CEO on the Middlesex County Budget twenty twenty-four.
Where's yours?
Thank you, Ina.
So I'll just give everybody a second to get that up there on the screen. Will you look at my bald head for a second? I didn't realise I was losing as much hair until that shot. Sue, you're supposed to tell me these things. I gotta get a better camera in. It's coming. Thank you. Who's got the thing? You got it? Oh, Greg's got it. Okay, great. Okay, so let's start by saying a few general comments about the budget. First, the first word that comes to mind about this budget is proud. I've just never been as proud as I am this year about how we got to where we are and what you're seeing in front of you. Not only from the aesthetics of it, I think it looks nice, I think it's informative, I think it's transparent, I think it's deep, and it's easily understood, I think we're going to find out. But it goes a couple of levels deeper than we normally do in terms of information provision, and I'm really, really proud of the product. The other thing I'm proud about is, besides how pretty it looks, is how forward-looking it is. And there really hasn't been a time in Middlesex County's history other than nineteen ninety-eight where we've seen as much change as we have in the last three years. And this budget responds to these changes and really puts us in a great place looking forward, which is amazing. And I'm going to go through how it does all that. But in nineteen ninety-eight, we got five times bigger overnight with provincial downloading of responsibilities here. It was my first year here, and really I've only seen one other change of this magnitude in my whole time here, and that's in the last couple of years, just with how many people decided that Middlesex County in this region is a great place to live. And so that's really been a factor in what we've had to respond to. The other thing I'd say is that I think it's strategic. I'm going to try to prove to you that it's innovative, and it uses new principles to address new challenges. And I'm going to say that it's an investment. Everything in here that we're talking about is about investing. It's priority investing. I could go and tell you, and this is not what this presentation's intended to do, I'm going to just talk at a really high level about what the new things are that counts that the budget committee wants us to invest in. And there's a, of course, there's a whole list of things in all of our business areas. I think we have thirty-six of them currently that are traditional and that you already know about. But today's really to talk about the new things and to answer any questions you have. But I am really, really proud of not only the budget and where we started. I remember that the very first time I saw the roll-up for this year's budget, Cindy and Paul sat me down in my office and said, here's the roll-up. And it wasn't what you're going to see today. It's a lot of work by a lot of people. And so the other thing I'm really proud of is the people. And in this room, Greg in particular, and Paul and Cindy have put their heart and soul into getting us where we are today. I get to come and tell you sort of the happiness, but just a real thank you to them for the hard work. And there's lots of people that aren't in this room that you don't see. And I just want to mention sort of their contribution. There's lots of times when Bill walks into an office and says, hey, what if? And that's a pain because they got their own jobs to do. They got their real jobs to do. But there's financial analysts, there's accounting people, there's payroll people, there's a whole pile of people in the finance department and in every one of the departments that you see here that put up with all my questions and put up with the budget committee's questions and get us fast and responsive answers. And I've already thanked them individually for how we got today, got to today. So I'm really proud of this budget in particular, probably more than any of the other ones that we presented because of those reasons, the people, what it is that you see in front of you, and also how far we came. And we'll talk about that. I know the budget committee knows this is the first year we've really shown the raw process that happens from start to finish of the work of the budget committee. And I think that is very transparent and really good for everyone to see, but a lot of hard work by that budget committee. And I just want to make sure everybody knows who was there. So that's Cathy Burkhart-Jessen, of course, our warden was there, and Sue Clark was there, and Brian was there. And thank you, guys, because we this is the most onerous committee that we have, and it's not always fun. It's long days of looking at some very complex problems. But I think council and staff owe you a debt of gratitude for the hours that you put in to getting to this day. So as I mentioned, I'm going to do the budget highlights, again, really high level. It's not intended to be the only thing we talk about. You asked me about how many pencils we buy, we can talk about that too. But I'm going to start at the opposite end of the spectrum and we'll go as deep as you want to go. We have as much time as you need and want, and we'll get to all of your questions. I'm going to talk about the innovative financial strategies we use to address some of the challenges we see. And then speaking of the challenges we see, I'm going to talk a little bit about looking ahead and talking about where we're at going forward. Sorry, Greg, you can move the slides forward. And then I'm going to give you some recommendations that came from the budget committee. So let's just get into the high-level stuff, and we'll go straight to the bottom line, as a former mayor used to say. Bill, what's the bottom line? Well, the bottom line is that I'm going to present to you a tax rate increase of five point five one percent, and and we'll talk about other things as we go forward. It may not be where we end up, but that really means, and Brian asked me this question, he said, Bill, can you also include what it means for each individual property? And it means twenty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents per hundred thousand of the value of the property according to MPAC. So if you have a house that is, this is the median assessed value of Middlesex, three hundred and three thousand, that's a seventy-two dollar increase on your county portion of your tax bill. Not significant, but not insignificant either, and we'll debate these numbers as we go through. Now, if, as we talk about what's happening in each of the different departments, you'll recognise that I kept it high level because in all your budget documents you have at least one level down from this and another level down. But for the purposes of today, to get the conversation started, I'll tell you that in social services, we had some significant investments in childcare and early-on programmes that supports more child and family visits. And you'll recall that I gave you a big speech about the two big factors that are happening in this county, demographics change, demographic changes, and service demands are two of the big ones. And this responds to that. And then we're also collaborating with the City of London to update the homeless prevention and housing plan as required by the province. So those are two things that are new in that department. MLPS is a big animal, and I struggled actually to tell you about just two bullet points about what's going on at MLPS that's new. But in for the purpose of this presentation, I highlighted that the service level is staying with the addition of two twelve-hours of service, two new twelve-hour calls every day. And that's an investment that we're making in a lot of things, including offload delays and call volume growth. And we could talk about all of that. We're also making investments in risk mitigation and protection, considering the call growth, call volume growth and offload delays, and a lot of that comes in our work we're doing in quality assurance and in making sure that we have ambulances there whenever our citizens need it. Another thing that I did, I started this process, well, I guess I started this process actually probably in Cathy's second term as warden. All these years run together. I'm not sure. Cathy, remember what year that was? Anyways. Okay, and she, we were talking about the landscape of the administration and what we needed. And we went through this process together where we looked at the entire administration at the time and said, you know what we really need? We need some project management skills here because a lot of the things that come up. I do this talk, I did this talk just recently with Ina, a lot of the things are practitioner things, things that are in your job description that you have to do every day. But we have a lot of special projects that can bump you off of that. And if we had somebody that was responsible for special projects, that would be great. And so we started thinking about that and strategising about it all those years ago and just couldn't really find the right fit to make it happen. Then what happened is we went down a person at MLPS, and that's why I bring it up here. I think I've told you a few times in this horseshoe that we're down a corporate services person because they advanced within the organisation and we haven't replaced them at MLPS. And so that's a big FTE role that is sitting there. And so what I did was in December, I started looking at the entire organisation and I looked at our skill sets almost the same way Cathy and I did before. And it was clear to me that we needed a role in strategic innovation, sort of that special projects management role and helping out with operations across MLPS and all of our other areas. And so I created a role that is called Director of Strategic Innovation. And we filled that role with an advancement in sort of in Paul's role here. And so he's been in that role now since January and doing that role, and I'm ecstatic. I think everybody's ecstatic about where we are from an operations perspective. Because now for the first time, I think we have this at MLPS covered and here covered. So that's great news as well. And but I put it in the MLPS section because part of what Paul's role is, is to support MLPS consistently in operations implementation of the projects that they have, but also across the rest of the organisation. And Ina reminded me this morning that I never sent out that job description, so I will. But I intended to in, I guess, in January-ish or someplace, sometime in there. And it, I think it's in my outbox somewhere, but I'll get that to you as well. Strathmere Lodge, staffing and technological advancements to support resident care quality is something that we've invested in. We've invested in the Strathmere Lodge facility rehabilitations. We're getting to the point now where Strathmere Lodge is not the new fresh building it was. And we have to start being strategic about how we look at that building and investing in it. And certainly at its age, there's some big price tags coming up, and we can talk in more detail about that if you like. Planning and Woodlots. Now, we added one planning staff to support county strategic outcomes. I know this was a big topic. Colin spoke eloquently about it last year, and those calls were heard by the budget committee and everybody else, and we've added one planning staff to support just a massive amount of planning applications that we have coming forward. And I, I'll just, I said, I've never been as happy with our team as I am right now. And that team in planning is amazing. If you don't know that planning team and that group, I had the opportunity to spend a half-day with them last Friday. And I've, it's just been incredible, the amount of work that those folks in planning have been able to do in really tough times. And when I say tough times, it's volume, 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 and really challenging files. So we need to support them with some additional staffing, and that's an investment that in revenue generation that the budget committee made. In terms of Middlesex County Library, we made some strategic investments in programmes and services that enhance and expand access to technology. And if you want more details about that, Lindsay's probably, oh, there she is, she's right there. Economic development, we're going to talk about some big-picture economic development stuff, but on the smaller picture, on more of the traditional role of economic development in the county, I just point out this bullet that we've put in place a new tourism tool to support regional economic development initiatives. Glad to talk more about that. Middlesex County Connect, that's our programme for transit, and additional funding was secured from the province for enhancements to Middlesex County Connect. So that's exciting news, and we'll talk more about the future of that as we go through the next couple of months. Administration, we made some adjustments to non-tax revenues, a very thorough review again of this area that increased our interest income and third-party recoveries. And we implemented a number of modernisation of corporate processes and workflows and invested in the people to make all of that happen. Transportation Infrastructure Programme, I really couldn't get this down to one bullet in so, or two bullets to just talk high level about. I can, I'll warn you that if you want Chris to go on any one of these projects, he'd be glad to give you a half hour on each one. But we're really excited about what we're doing with infrastructure and and the investments that we're making in it and how innovative we're going to be going forward with how we address some of our challenges. With infrastructure, there's a lot of work to be done in the county in terms of infrastructure, even though I think by anybody's assessment, our infrastructure is at the top of any list that you look at. But it has to stay that way for the good of the economy and for the safety of our residents. And so what you're seeing here is an overview of just how much of a investment we're making into that area. And of particular note, I think, is the Glendon and Vinack Roundabout, a big-ticket item that's moving ahead. And not only is that going to support further growth in the county, I think it's an economic driver as well, and well timed to take advantage of of the pricing and making sure that we get that project done for our citizens. And then, of course, the road paving programme never stops, and just so you know where that work will be done, there's the number of metres in each location there for the work for twenty twenty-four. So I mentioned I'm really proud of everything and proud of the team and proud of where we are. I've never really seen the team cooking as well as we are and as we are right now. And it's really exciting that we're in this position. But I've also been telling you that, well, I've been saying this actually for twenty-five years, you're in an outstanding financial position. We have new, we have new information and new tools to defend that. If someone says, wow, Bill, you've said for a while that this municipality is at the top of the heap when it comes to being in a positive financial situation. And last year, we had a big tax increase. We had a big residential tax increase. How can the two things be true? We can talk about that, but the really great news is that from every angle, from tax rates to reserves to use of debt, you're in an unrivalled position, I believe, and that that allows you to continue. The reason that is, is because you've made strategic partnerships, you've made proper, great decisions, and you've committed to those legislated services and invested. And we haven't looked retroactively at things. We've been proactive around here, and that's credit to the people around this table. The other thing that's exciting about this budget is, for the first time in a little while, you know, the Tax Rate Stabilisation Fund was really about for rainy days. And frankly, I've told you for a while that it's been raining here, not because of bad decisions, but just because everybody wants to be here. And that growth is what is really choking you financially. But this year, we managed to get to a point where we don't even need to use that tax rate stabilisation. And that's a real accomplishment. And the budget committee knows from where we started to getting to that point to not have to use the umbrella of the tax rate stabilisation when it's still raining, we're still seeing these things happen, is really, really incredible. Thanks, Greg. You can keep going. Oh, yeah, you got it perfectly there. That's perfect. So I know there's lots of different measures. Council likes this measurement of where we are from a tax rate point of view. I guarantee we're going to be lower than the vast majority again this year that are coming out, and we can talk more about that. But this really is something that I was talking to Dave Manders today about this. We really do want you to be ambassadors for what council's trying to do. And one of the things that traditionally we've tried to do around here is keep our tax rates low and provide the highest quality services at the same time. And, you know, by any measure, I think you've pulled it off. And when somebody asks you about this, I would point to this chart. Like, I mean, it is quite a stark difference. If you look at we've actually been in a better position than this over the last twenty-five years, but we're still in a really great position from an economic development point of view, when people look out to us and say, why would I be in Middlesex? There's a lot of great reasons, and a lot of them is your balance between great services and low cost. And this is one chart that definitely proves that. I just want to move on to Greg, can you get those pictures off the screen somehow? Just minimise them, or somebody do that? So those slides I just presented to you was exactly what I was going to tell you up until last Thursday. And over the last two business days, some things have happened. And so we got together as a group at our senior management group over the last two business days, and there's been some new information. And what new information has there been? I would say that there's really been three areas that I want to draw to your attention that could change the equation even more positively than the positive message I just gave you. Those three areas are the winter maintenance budget, the social housing budget for twenty twenty-four, and the twenty twenty-three social housing budget. So let's start with the twenty twenty-three social housing budget. It's when we were double-checking with the city. And so you've got to imagine, we do the same thing, frankly. We have these CMSM agreements, and we go through and we do sort of our pre-audit work, but really the audit work that says what your year-end is going to be doesn't happen for a little while yet. But you get indications of where you are last year's budget. And so on the social housing budget for twenty twenty-three that the city operates on our behalf, there were several business cases that they just weren't able to get to. And that resulted in a surplus of a million dollars. Now, we could have just, we could have just said, okay, well, it's too late, but really it's important to get to you because I have, I spoke so much that I think the budget committee was getting tired of hearing me talk about municipal economic theory about getting tax dollars that are provided for one thing back to the taxpayers that gave that money for that purpose. And so it's really important to me that we come to you and say, we have indication that there's a surplus in the social housing budget directly from the city of a million dollars. So my recommendation is that we incorporate that and use that to lower this year's tax rate because that's as fast as you can get that money back into the hands of the people that provided it to you for that purpose. Likewise, we know, just to walk you through sort of the little few of the weeds of how we figure things out, we do the same thing as the city does. We give a a budget in November-ish on ambulance, and sometimes things change, and you might give the city a bit of an update on sort of where things change after. Because theoretically, we could come to county council, that is just created by the MLPS, and we could come to county council, county council says no. So then we'd have, it's never happened, but if it did happen, we'd have to go back to the city and say, sorry, that's not the way it works. So we got an early indication of what the social housing budget would be. Put that placeholder in our budget, and then whenever that social housing budget went through the city, the number that they've now given us over the last two business days is lower by two hundred and eighty-six, three hundred and sixteen dollars. Again, I think it's responsible to come to you and say, now that number's lower, that number should be going back to the taxpayers instead of taking it and then wondering about whether they might spend it because we've got every indication that this is their number for this year now. Again, hot off the presses. The other thing that was a real interesting discussion that we had, and it was sparked by a good look at, we did, we spent a lot of time talking about transportation and how we do things in transportation, not sort of the nitty-gritty day-to-day, but a little bit of that, but more so big-picture stuff. And Brian asked me a really great question about this last night, because I talked to the budget committee, I sent a note out to the budget committee about this. And in the winter maintenance budget, it's it's clear to me, and it's clear to everybody, that the end of twenty twenty-three and the beginning of twenty twenty-four are not normal years. That's not our normal timeframe. And it's clear to me that we budgeted actually for a bit of an increase in our winter, as you would, for maybe some inflationary factors initially in our budget. But it's very clear to me and clear to Chris that two things are true. One is our reserve for winter control is going to be fine. And we did an analysis, and we're going to get into a deeper analysis of this with council. We did an analysis of what the right number is for winter control budget. Or, and we want to do that with all our reserves, frankly. If they're operating reserves, we want to look at them and say, does it make sense to have two hundred percent of a total budget year? Or does it make sense to have fifty percent of a total budget year, and why? In this particular case, our group administratively decided that that number should be fifty percent, and we're going to exceed that in our view by the end of the year. So it means that in by all accounts, you're in good shape to reduce the winter control budget to at least back to what it was last year. And that won't affect the winter control reserve. And considering how far through the winter control season we are, because it's not the whole year, that we think that we can reduce it by a hundred thousand at a minimum, and that's what we're recommending. If we did those three things, that means the tax rate drops to two-point, tax rate increase drops to two point nine three. And as Brian requested, we crunched the new numbers on that. And that's twelve dollars and sixty-four cents per hundred thousand. And for a three hundred and three thousand dollar house, that drops the tax rate down to thirty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents. So you might wonder why it changes it so much, because there's other services, I'll take land ambulance, I could remove that same kind of money from land ambulance, and it wouldn't necessarily have the same type of impact. But social housing and, I mean by percentage, social housing and transportation are huge components of the levy. And so when you make these types of adjustments, even though they're not massive, you know, one point three million, they do have a significant impact on the tax rate. So that's where we are from a budget perspective, where the the budget committee frankly didn't have a chance to meet and talk about that two point nine three, because that's all in the last two business days. But administratively, that's what we're recommending, and we can debate whether that's the right number or the five, whatever number is the right number. But that's what we're recommending administratively to council. In terms of financial strategies, we really took a different approach to how we did a lot of things. And the budget committee gave me a lot of time to talk about theories and and principles about how we deal with some of this stuff. But the first opportunities came really from starting earlier. And it was painful. It was a lot of pain, I think administratively, to start a little bit earlier. And it wasn't a little bit earlier. I think it was, you know, a good chunk earlier. But it really did allow us to have different types of conversations, because it didn't feel like we didn't have time for the bigger, high-level discussions because we started earlier. And will we get better at starting earlier? Yes, we will get better at it administratively, it'll be part of our cadence. It just wasn't part of our cadence to start then, and that is like starting an engine cold. And we'll be better for next year. But that really did improve the outcome, in my view, in a lot of different ways. And so I was really pleased with how that worked. And we can talk about what I think, because I'm sure somebody's got a question about, should we do that again? What would that look like? I have some thoughts on that. I'll share for later. Debt strategy. I talked a lot about linking the asset lifecycle to the taxpayer that is using it, where the depreciation happens, and debt strategy is one way to make that happen. So we've cautiously stuck our foot, or toe, sorry, not the whole foot, that would be too much. We've cautiously stuck a very small pinky toe into that pond. And we are going to be working with you to understand how debt will impact our long-term asset management strategy, because it has to. I talked a lot to you already about what's I talked a lot to you already about what's changing demographically, what's changing in service demand. I talked to you about all of that. But what's also changing is we have to have a long-term outlook for our infrastructure, which is massive. I don't think, like, frankly, I didn't know even as long as I've been here, until you sit down and think about it, how many assets we have from culverts, bridges, road kilometers. Like, I remember when the last time I really thought about it to the magnitude was in ninety eight when we inherited the largest road kilometers of any municipality in the province, from the province. And think about the magnitude of that. So we're huge whenever it comes to asset, and we need to incorporate debt into that so that there's a connection directly between the taxpayer where the depreciation is happening and the asset. And so you're going to hear a lot more about that and how we strategically use it going forward. Development charges is another theory that I've talked a lot about from a municipal economics point of view. And to dumb it down to its smallest strokes, that's growth needs to pay for growth. And these are things that really haven't happened in Middlesex County using development charges. It's happened at the lower tier. It hasn't happened at the county. And we want to take a very small toe into that pool as well. And the reason is not because I'm sitting here saying you guys need the money. It's about linking up the right taxpayer to where those costs are coming from. I personally believe it's unfair if we don't, I'll put my thumb on the scale a little bit. I personally believe it's unfair if we don't have development charges because of the massive amount of growth that you're seeing. You're asking a lot of residents that have been here for a long time to pay for that growth. And I, that's how I'll put my thumb on the scale is I think that's unfair. And we're going to show you why that's unfair because almost a huge proportion of what we're going to show you from an asset perspective is related to that new growth, and that's where it needs to come from. So I say we're putting a small, I talked to you a lot about this at the last meeting, but I say a small toe because we're not going out there and talking about libraries. We're not talking about social. You know, we're not talking about a whole pile of things that maybe you might think could get thrown into a development charge. We're talking about transportation. Start, stop. That's what we're talking about. And that's where it should be. So other big financial strategies are Economic Development Corporation. And I gave you a long report that really had a short message. You need to do something about industrial assessment. If you don't do something about industrial assessment, whoever comes after me is going to be looking at this and going, why didn't you force them to do this? I don't get to force you to do anything, but I'm going to talk to you a lot about these issues because you're going to get run over by this issue if you don't make a big, bold statement about the need for more industrial assessment in this county. And in the long run, you'll really get punished if you don't make that change. To do that, you can't do things the same. It has to be big and bold. And I, I've been thinking about this a lot, talking to a lot of you about it. Primarily, I've been talking to a lot of folks at the lower tier about it too, as well as some people around this horseshoe. We're ready for this. We weren't ready a few years ago. We weren't even ready last year, in my view. It feels like the right time. And what had to happen? I'm going to give you a longer speech about this at some point in time, but what really had to happen here was after restructuring, municipalities needed to see what, get their legs underneath them from an economic development point of view. They needed to figure out what they wanted their role to be. After that restructuring and after some changes at the provincial level, the county needed to take a little step in there because there's a long time around this horseshoe where the only economic development that was done was keeping tax rates low. And that was okay. That was the approach they wanted to take. When that started to change, we couldn't do it overnight. We couldn't go to a large structure overnight. The other thing that's changed is we really do need, and many of you have talked to me about this, we really do need because of the amount of growth we're having and what's happening out in the county, you know what you see it. Our residents see it. It's overwhelming what's coming your way in terms of growth on the commercial side and in the residential side. And on the industrial side, you need advocates because there is, as much as we try to not wear a planning only hat, it's really hard whenever you're the planning authority. And I know Colin and I have had conversations about this, others and I have had conversations about this. Having an advocate in the Economic Development Corporation to advocate for somebody that's outside the system as an advocate is really, really important, I think, for our future growth. And something that's long overdue. So a big, bold statement is coming about that. We're going to put that report in front of you, and we're hoping it is received well. Infrastructure levy is an idea where, again, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to match up long-term demand so that there's no surprises. The last thing you want is, hey, guess what? We have to do a bridge and it's twenty two million. Surprise. That'll kill you. That's devastating for the tax rate. And there's no way we can allow that to happen. So having an infrastructure levy that matches up directly with a long-term infrastructure plan is really important to me. And it may not be a small amount, but what it's saying is we understand our needs. We know when that's going to be needed, and we've got a plan for it. You can go out and confidently say to the taxpayer, hey, for the next twenty five years, here's what we know we're going to need, and it's mashed up to this number. That's an infrastructure levy that's on the bill, and we know what that number is going to be three years from now, and we know what that number is going to be tomorrow. And I think that's really important. One of the things that is really important to me is that when someone makes an investment in our community, often what do they look at? They look at the price of a house. They look at whether there's a school. But increasingly, you'd be surprised at the number of people. This is your largest asset you're likely to own for most Canadians. And it's also where there's the most amount of risk. And increasingly, you're going to start seeing questions like, how much debt does the municipality have? What's your tax rate? And what's your plan for the infrastructure under the ground? Because just read the newspaper about people that are surprised that a whole trunk sewer line has to be replaced. And now that person's on the hook for it with some special levy. No surprises. Every resident should know what they're on the hook for in this county for infrastructure for a long time. And that should be an important component for industrial assessment as well because they want to know what they're in for, not only from a tax perspective, but from an infrastructure perspective. And then I think finally is the county loan program. This has got to be part of the three legs of the stool around getting more infrastructure investment. We really have to focus that away from residential, and I've talked about that a little bit, so I won't say more. But this has to be one of your catalysts for assessment diversification. And then if you look ahead on assessment diversification, we've been really reliant on residential growth. I've said that. This is a huge second point. If you look at the services we deliver, they're the worst possible services for matching up to assessment because they're not property based. Frankly, I don't know what services are anymore, but at the county, they're really not matched up well. When you look at the types of services that we provide, they're very not linked. They're human services. There's things that really should be on an income tax base or some other type of methodology. They're not, they don't respond well one-to-one with property tax, and I've been saying that a lot. But we're not really growing our property tax base at the same pace as what we're seeing with service demand because of what I said to you already about reassessment. That is really hurting you. You're falling behind. And we would be in an even better position if we could spread those costs out with assessment, with reassessment to a larger group. But, but that is something that we're having trouble with. And this has to be something that you hear, multi-residential and affordable development is the key to our future. It isn't, in my view, when we look ahead, and I've said this to the group, we have to invest in everything we can to get to multi-res. There was a long time that affordable housing meant that you invest in new subdivisions. Those aren't, that's not affordable. That's not, doesn't meet the definition of affordable anymore. And we have to look towards, Aina and I talk about this a lot, the importance of focusing in on multi-residential and employment land uses. And this budget, in my view, supports all of that. So when you look at our population growth, they've talked about that, service demands, I've talked about demographics. And one thing that I am, if you said to me, hey, Bill, where would you spend X number of dollars if you had some more? It's that last bullet. We've gone to the point, I think, in our organizational structure and stressed it. That's why, one of the reasons I really wanted to add this new, I did add this new position is because the people that are in this room have, they've gone to the point of, of there's loyalty and then there's beyond loyalty because I've asked them to. But it's not sustainable, and I know that, and we've made some small changes in this budget to address that. But demographically, our group's changing too. And I think that the folks that are having birthdays like I'm having apparently are different than, in terms of the their willingness to take on some of those extra things that are above and beyond their job description. They do it out of loyalty to the organization, but you're going to have to plan for a day when you're not as flat as you are now. And it's also, we do it in our highest priority areas for succession planning. But now you are massive as a public sector entity, and you're going to have to start doing it for capacity. And I say this, again, Colin and I had a, just a discussion recently about it's not only what I'm seeing in our landscape. It's also what I'm seeing about what the next level of service provision might be for our lower tiers who are also having some of the similar issues but can't afford individually to afford X position, but collectively we can. We have to look at that, and that's going to be a focus of mine over this year. But we've made some small investments, but that's where I'd make more if we could. And I can talk about how I plan to do some of that. So getting to the recommendations, I really want to keep these two things separate. I'm just, it's important that I tell you all the recommendations of the Budget Committee, but I really want to focus on recommendation number one first. Is that what we really want to say? Yes, we receive for information. Yeah. And, oh, March twenty sixth, there it is. Okay, that is what we want to say. But I think we do need to have a conversation about that two point nine whatever versus that five point five whatever. I'd love to have that conversation and stick something in there about that so we have direction because that's very new information, Aina, that nobody's had a chance to debate. Then the second thing that we have for a recommendation that came out of the committee has to do a score. And Greg's going to push that button there. And I can talk more about this whenever that time comes, but I'd prefer to save that discussion. I know if it's okay procedurally to deal with the first one first, answer all your questions, and then we'll get the score whenever the time comes. I'm done.
So before we get to recommendations, obviously, we have to answer the questions. So I'll look to the members. I'll start with you, councillor Grant.
Thank you, Warren, through you to the Budget Committee as a whole. Thank you for the the hard work, and it's hard work that was done, and we greatly appreciate it. But I just have two questions, pretty simple, I think. I looked on for a line item with regards to debt. You do talk about debts. I have to ask, did we increase our debt and by how much? That's question number one.
You want to take it, Cindy? Go ahead.
I was going to say you could take it, but through the warden to councillor, no, we have no new debt that we have in this budget. We'll be coming back to county council and later in the year to talk about a debt policy and have a fulsome discussion about that and how we use debt as we go forward in the budget.
And the only other caveat I'd add to that is the only debt that I recall, and then somebody else can correct me if they remember, the only debt that I recall in the history of the county that I've been here for, which is a good chunk of it, is the Strathmere Lodge, and I think I mentioned that last time, and we're getting close to the end of that, and it's a pretty small number. But we're getting close to the end of that, too.
Thank you, just, and thank you for that on the debt. Just a follow-up on the million dollars from the social. Was that direct, excuse me, taxation from our residents? Or was that a, I don't have the right word, funding from the city that's coming back? So how was, how did that, where did that one million dollars come from? From our taxpayer? I just need to understand.
I'll start, I'll start, and then let Cindy finish. So we at the county, in our levy, in our county tax rate, we pull the money that we need for social housing. And that number that we need is given to us by the city, and then we hand them the money that we collected from the residents in our, from our levy, we pay them to do social housing for us. They take that money, they deliver the program for the year, and then if there's a surplus in the account, they give it back to us. Cindy, do you have something you can add to that?
Through the warden to councillor, that's absolutely right. So we did get the bill for two thousand and twenty three. And they do the reconciliation, which is part of their year-end process. So they've just finished that. And they let us know what our amount that we actually owe in two thousand and twenty three, and it's that million dollars. So if you look at two thousand and twenty three, it was part of that levy. So that's why we thought it was really important that we bring it up here and we see if we can reduce the tax rate for two thousand and twenty four. So it is a real-time decision.
Okay, so out of our taxpayers' pockets, in other words. Okay, that's where it started from. Thank you.
Yep.
And councillor Maguire.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Just on a follow-up question to that, CMSM.
Ah, sorry, Mike. You're right.
Acronym.
Yes, sorry, I do that. Paul will have to remember to remind me not to do that. Consolidated Municipal Service Manager. And so this is something that you'll hear a lot. You'll hear, well, you know, in ambulance, we give you a lot of acronyms, but around this table, that's our primary acronym. And so in, I want to say ninety eight, might have been ninety nine, the province introduced CMSM legislation. And it was the first time in my memory where there's been taxation without representation in modern provincial government. And really what it was is saying, hey, we want to have regional services, but any one region is kind of too small maybe for this service. So they looked across the entire province and they said, hey, does it make sense to have a regional service for ambulance at the county level and the city level? No, it probably makes sense to combine them together, but somebody's got to be in charge. So the county was put in charge. And I was part of that process of figuring out all that. It was called the Who Does What Panel, which that was back in the day when they named things for fun. And it was called the Who Does What Panel, and there was a fellow named Mr Crombie that was part of all of that as well. But anyhow, in the Who Does What Panel, they decided that this is what they should do. So then they created CMSMs. Now, there's also a CMSM for social housing and Ontario Works. And that CMSM covers Middlesex County and the city. And the city does social housing, and they do Ontario Works. They're responsible for it. But they get the money to operate it in our area or sort of globally on an assessment basis. That's one of the factors from us, and we hand them that money and they do it for us, and vice versa for ambulance.
And a second question, I just lost my train of thought when following one of the last comments on organizational structure and trends on a flat, lean organizational structure. Are you saying we're too flat and too lean, and that's what we need to potentially address in the future? Or we need to become more flat and more lean?
Oh, no, the first one. Yeah, so yeah, by any measure, when I show you our organizational chart compared to any public sector organization, it's funny because I always bug Jessica. Do you have the tabloid paper for the org chart? Because it goes like this, like there's bill, and then it goes like this for all of our different business areas. Most organizational charts would have a bill go like this and then go this way, so it's more square. Ours is like the old printer paper with the holes in it. It goes that way. And we've traditionally done that because oh, one, it was a necessity in a, you know, when you're a fiscally conservative municipality, you do that. But we've also had the luxury of hiring people that are veterans. I've been able to select my own team. I've been able to have the money to get the very best in each position, in my view. And so council's done that, and that's meant we've had more capacity because I think that in Chris's week, compared to someone who's just starting off in their career, he can do by Monday what most others would take a whole week for. And so you get that extra capacity by having the people that are more senior. The problem is that that isn't sustainable just because one, you've just grown so fast, and eventually there's a tipping point to that. You use up all that capacity that you have, then you ask people to go beyond that capacity in almost every area. That's what I'm doing. Like, if you put a gun to my head and said, pick an area, you're not doing that, I'm having a hard time thinking of what it would be. And so now it's to the point where how long is it sustainable? Not only from a longevity point of view, how long is it sustainable um, from responding to the size increase of everything that we're doing? And then when you throw in all these special projects, like I had a really nice conversation with uh, Brian and Aina about a few things last week. And I pointed to the fact that if you look at, um, let's take a modernization program, for example. Well, that's great. We get money for a modernization program. But who's going to implement that? Like where do I get? So I beg Greg, I beg Cindy, I beg all these different people to help do that. But they have their regular job to do too. And so if we want to invest in um, all this growth that's happening, um, I've got a stopgap measure by the new position I created, but eventually that's not even going to be enough because you are growing really fast and you have the next generation that comes along might be younger and less experienced and you're going to need that. And so we do it a lot now where you see little bumps, it's only succession and then that's usually only for a little while. Like Lindsay was succession. And then the person wasn't there and we didn't backfill in behind. It was flat again, but that was just because of succession. And I can point to every area where we haven't done that. And it's part strategy, but it's also part necessity. And I just, and what I'm signaling to council is you're, you're growing way too fast to maintain that. So there's areas that we've invested in, in this budget to help with that, but you're going to have to continue to invest in that over the next little while. And that's exciting for me because um, we're going to see, I'm trying to build, I was talking to Aina and Brian about this, what I'm trying to build and I think I've already built is a three generation administration. What I mean by that is um, there's people that are roughly my age, I say that because, you know, within five years, you know, there's that group. If you look around the room, there's that group. Um, then there's the, the lucky thirties, you know, those people that are in that thirty-five to whatever, you know, forty-five range. Those are extremely valuable people that we invest a lot in because there are um, next generation coming up and we have a huge track record of not losing them because we invest in those people education wise and other things. And if we don't have those positions to come into from a succession point of view, uh, and as a secondary level, we're going to lose those people because they're going to, like, right now, there's people in the parking lot probably going, hey, I can steal Jessica, I can steal Bailey, or I can steal some, some of my thirty-some people, Bailey, you're thirty-something, right? You get the idea? All right, all right, fair enough. We'll sing happy birthday to you another day, but you get my point. Those are the people that are super valuable and we can't lose them. And then this, the last, the group that I'm like super proud, I'm super proud of all of our group. But this next generation that that group built for you, that is our incoming group, incredible. And we're investing, Aina and Brian and I talked about just how much we're investing in that group because we're trying to build the loyalty. We're trying to say, here's your path. Here's everything and here's your educational opportunities. Here's the culture we're trying to create. The work that we did last year when bringing Queens in to talk about vision and how we're doing everything together, that group and that twenty-year-old to thirty-five-year-old group is simply fantastic. The more you get to know that group as well, you're going to be really impressed and but we need to start getting that organization to look more like this or we're going to lose those people in the middle. And it's kind of like, that's where you're, it, you could break down really quickly. You could lose a few people in the middle. You know, I don't think we're going to lose anybody at the top, but I think if we lose anybody at the middle, um, that could break your organization down because then when those, then you got to hire from outside, the culture changes, a whole bunch of things change whenever you have to do that. A little bit's good, but you don't want to lose that group in the middle. So we really need to invest in that. We can talk more about it at another meeting, but that is something that we're really looking at.
Uh, to councillor Smiber.
Thank you. I also wanted to thank the budget committee and also staff for bringing in I, what I think is a really responsible budget. Um, I have to um, say that we, you hear sometimes in the media that some counties are looking at double digits in terms of increases for their budget. So the five point five one percent seems really responsible, seems really reasonable. I do want to have a conversation or some discussion, I guess, around the, the million dollars that's coming back uh, to us. And I'm wondering if that's it's okay, an opportunity for the county, okay? I don't like to hear my own voice. Yeah, uh, if that's an opportunity for the county to take a look at um, making investments in our housing strategy or even with the economic development corporation that we propose to, to take a look at rather than giving that back. So I don't know if that's a discussion we have today or if it's a referral back to the budget committee for them to uh, make some discussions or recommendations that might come back to council.
Can I take that one? Yeah, so um, really great thoughts and um, so there's a, there's a number of things, you, you opened up a doorway for me to talk about things that aren't in here that were still discussed by the budget committee and will, and then I'll get back to your specific question. And why are they not here? Well, it's because we have another plan for how to address them. So I would say that there's a couple of things that the budget committee talked about. So first of all, I threw up that big story about economic development and about how we need to invest in that. It's not in this budget. The money needed, oh, we have a money for economic development, don't get me wrong. But the money needed to do an economic development corporation and what it, it's not in here. That's because you haven't made that decision yet. And it's kind of a one-time thing. We'll talk about that. Um, there's another thing that's not in there and that is the lodge roof. The roof needs to be replaced, the whole roof needs to be replaced, but there's um, only half of the lodge roof in this budget. You're going to ask why? I'm going to tell you. Then um, there's um, some, some enhancements to the legal program that we want to talk about, that the budget committee thinks needs to, need to be done. There's a financial cost to that. Why is it that not in there? I'm going to talk about that. And then um, the market review that we're doing, there's some in here around, because we know we're way behind in market review and we don't want to lose the people we just talked about. There's some in here, but we might need more and we'll talk about that. And then the housing that you mentioned. Now, why aren't all of those things in here? One, because in every single one of those cases, council hasn't had the discussion yet and you will, you'll get your opportunity. You're going to get a full report on legal, you're going to get a full report, a, a very comprehensive report on economic development. Um, the lodge stuff, uh, the market and the housing, you're going to get all those reports, but I can't put that in there till you guys have the debate. The really cool part about all of those items are that they're all one time. So like even the housing strategy thing you're talking about, we're not in the, like, we spend millions, as you know, in social housing, but that's not what we do in terms of um, building those. But you might say, well, we talked about having an employee that would help do a strategy or uh, that would probably be a consultant, a one-time thing and we do a strategy and it'd be over. Those are the kind of things that are really helpful. Um, I mean, really great to include in a surplus discussion. And we are going to have a surplus in each of those different areas. So for example, the budget committee looked at the lodge and said, it really should be the whole roof. And I said, okay, but in the budget, let's just do this because we're going to have a surplus in the lodge. Um, for a lot of reasons we can get into, um, case mix index, COVID funding, all this kind of stuff. You're going to have uh, a surplus at the lodge, let's pay for the other half of the roof out of that surplus. And then that makes sense to me because otherwise you're going to have a surplus problem. Um, so almost all the things you mentioned, including housing and everything else, I would love to have all that conversation out of the surplus and not the budget because then I'm going to be able to give you a fulsome report and I'm going to tell you exactly what, when, when I know. But I, I generally have an idea you're going to have a good surplus. And that is where these things that are one time. So my category, Michelle, for what would fall into that is at one time? Because in the budget, you really don't want to put in things that are one time very often because then they get stuck in the budget and then in my view that can happen. So they're one time and they match up nicely to where the surplus was created. Lodge roof is a perfect example. Um, um, economic development really is something that we're going to have to pay for at a general. Um, so all of these things kind of make sense to me as, as a surplus discussion. So then the final piece I'd say is when? Now, all the reports are going to start coming to you really fast and furious in the next couple of meetings on these things, but the surplus discussion, we'll know what our full surplus is going to be sometime around Cindy, this is your part. Just say a month.
Um, well, the final report will be when I do the financial statements and through the audit reports, which is usually about July. Um, but before then, we'll have a general idea what our surplus looks like when we finish our year end process.
Yeah. And if I thought that we weren't going to have the money to match up to council decisions, then I'd tell you, but I think we're going to have the money to match up to council decisions. So yeah, that's my answer is let's park those things and debate them. Have you guys have a good debate about whether that's what you spend surplus on, but that's why.
Add on? Thank you. Anyone else? Uh, councillor Rickart, Jess.
Um, thank you. And through the warden, just a couple of questions. Um, and I guess mine is more about the winter maintenance. Um, it's a hundred thousand dollars, a good chunk of money, not, not make or break. Um, but I don't want to get in the habit um, of making decisions when it comes to winter maintenance as a, as a reaction um, to what we've experienced this year and, and to a good extent uh, last year. Um, and I guess I want to make sure that um, you know, come November, that, you know, we are covered for November and December, um, and that we haven't just made a decision too quickly, whereas maybe looking at, at more as an average over a period of time. Um, so that's my first question. And the second one is a, a comment and it's on the CMSM um, with regards to the supportive housing and the business cases. Um, I am glad that the, the city has reacted in the way that they have and, and given the money back to our taxpayers and not just rolled it over um, and with a plan to address those business cases. So I think that's a really good news story. Um, so thank you to the city for that. And then just back to councillor Maguire's um, comments about the lean structure. Certainly those were really, I think, a lot of, that made up a lot of the discussion that the budget committee had. It started last year um, in that there was a number of departments that came that asked for um, uh, an increase in employees. And last year, you'll recall, we really held back and um, really didn't allow for that. And this year, we've had that discussion about um, you know, when is it time to start investing in our employee complement? And when is too lean, too lean? Um, as Bill, I'm not going to, you know, repeat everything that the C A O said. We are so fortunate to have the employees that we do at every level that are willing to take on extra projects, that are willing to extend that job description, that are willing to do the, you know, other things um, as assigned sort of thing. But at some point, the organ, this organization has to prepare for when those employees aren't here and it's part of succession planning. And I think um, those, as I say, those discussions were really fruitful during the budget discussion. And I think it's really time that Middlesex County look at what it is that we want our structure to be um, and how we can grow with the growing demands um, of the county.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I think that's perfect. I'll, I'll start with that last one. And so um, I've spent a lot of time looking at organizational needs from an administrative point of view. And uh, Aina's heard this a lot, but I mean, there's, there's really three components of any job here. There's management in the, I'm talking about department is of course, there's managing people. There is what I call the practitioner piece, which is day to day. We don't just get the luxury of just managing people. We also have our real jobs to do of, you know, a, a function. And then we have operations and that is usually special stuff or even implement, implementing things. Everybody here is world-class at the, the middle piece, that practitioner piece, that's what they're really, really great at. Where we see gaps is when we have to go down into the operation implementation on special projects because then that starts hurting the practitioner piece. And I go, well, why did this drop off? Well, because I've asked somebody to work Saturday and Sunday and all these other times on this piece that's the O in our equation, sort of that operational piece. And on the managerial piece, that's, you know, really great. And where anybody needs help, that's what we do, training and we do all the work we do around education and all that education stuff. So our team's in really, really great shape now, since we filled in some of that operation piece, that's going to take time, but it's just putting the finger, uh, you know, sort of your thumb in it right now to try and hold on. And that's what Kathy I think is saying and I'm saying. Now, when it comes to winter maintenance, this is my fault and then I'll turn it over to Chris because it was my idea to put this number in there and I'm sure he'll tell you the same thing. But we'll let him tell you whether he thinks it's a good idea or not. The um, the reason why is, is because of two things. There was, there's going to be a, a surplus there because of last year. So that's a factor. Normally, whenever you see a good spring, and I totally agree with everything Kathy said, of course, where just because the weather is great for the spring or the winter, doesn't mean you change everything. And I would argue that we haven't. What we've done is we've, I'm, my big concern is that our reserve and winter control will get too big, unexplainably big, because you've had a good full year last year, but an excellent fall. But the fall is traditionally the smaller piece of winter maintenance. When that was combined with the larger piece of winter maintenance, which is this, this winter-spring, you know, right to today, you know, we had almost zero wind, well, I guess on the weekend we might have had one winter event, but nothing like, and so it just didn't make sense to me that we increase a budget when we know we're going to have a big surplus from last year. And we already know that, you know, I'm going to spit out a number that sixty percent of the potential winter maintenance days are already behind us. And so that was my thinking and I approached like, li- literally, we had this conversation on Monday. I don't know how I, I always say to my team, I don't know how Aina and I go out and explain that because I can't have the winter control budget ballooning to the size of a full year budget. That's not what it's meant to do. It's meant to round edges. That's what it's meant to do. So that was the main focus and Chris can say whatever he wants about it.
I'd just like to stop talking about it because every time we start talking about a good winter, we're going to have a through a three-week-long blizzard, but um, yeah, it's well said. I mean, i- it certainly is uh, an unusual year. Um, with regards to the, the temperatures we're seeing even today. Uh, the intent in the budget was simply to make up for uh, staff salary increases, part of our negotiated um, union agreements. Um, but holding it at the twenty twenty-three budgeted level certainly will continue to put us in a, a surplus for now. Pending what we see uh, for the rest of the winter, we're still in winter season and, and into uh, into later uh, in the year. Uh, but again, we certainly have come a long way from uh, years where we actually had a negative balance in our winter maintenance reserves. Um, we are at a point now where we're getting, or we've gotten to the point where the winter maintenance reserve is, is in a healthy position where we are able to absorb a large swing in winter weather. Um, like we've seen, you know, three or four years ago, but again, uh, for twenty twenty-four's budget, proposed budget, uh, I, I would feel comfortable withholding the same budgeted amount that we had in, in twenty twenty-three, even considering the fact that we're seeing a significant increases in our unit prices and we're doing, uh, we have a, a s- salary increase as negotiated in our union budget. Uh, again, I still feel at the end of the year, such wood, um, things will be still in the green as far as where we're at with a surplus in the remaining.
Yep, sorry, go ahead, Ted.
Thank you. Um, no, thank you for that explanation and um, and I know that um, the warden and the C A O will be going out um, this year and talking to councils. And so I mean, that's a great narrative to be able to bring back to, to the local municipalities. So I appreciate that. Um, the other thing I just wanted to touch on, and I know it's coming up um, later this year is this different approach um, on debt. And I think that um, this is a big thing for Middlesex County. It's something that we've never um, embarked on before. But I think it will provide us a lot of opportunity that we haven't necessarily been able to have before. And um, it's exciting. Um, and I'm really looking forward to when that um, policy is brought to council because I really do think it's going to be transformative for how we do business and how we can move forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Is there anyone else? In that case, the last specifically, are the members of the um, budget committee uh, wanting an opportunity to comment? Anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Uh, councillor Rob.
Uh, thank you through the warden.
Uh, thank you through the warden. Uh, Bill, you may comment to it starting earlier this year, starting in November. And I think it was a learning curve for us all a little bit, because we're used to getting answers to questions that we couldn't get at that time. Was a bit frustrating at the beginning. But I think going forward, I would, I kind of hesitate. I know our plan is to have it even go earlier next year for twenty-five. And I'm, I think that we should maintain the the dates in my feeling, maintain the dates we set this year, rather than go earlier yet and get our feet under, under us uh better for next year.
Yeah, uh, well, Warden, I uh, I agree with a caveat, because um, uh, Brian's exactly right. I, I said already, it was like starting a cold engine at a different time for us. And um, we ended up talking a lot about philosophy, which were good conversations actually to have. We didn't waste our time in the early days, but it wasn't as well um done as it could have been if the that philosophy was linked to numbers. Um, so we, we managed to work our way through it this year. Uh, there's a lot of processes that changed to start earlier that, uh, in hindsight, I should have maybe made sure the engine was a little warmer earlier so that we didn't have that problem. But for sure, that engine will be warm next year when we start. But I, I a hundred percent agree that we don't, we shouldn't start earlier, at least next year, even though our calendar says we will. And I'll tell you why. Um, one, I want to give everybody a little bit of time to get used to this cadence and make sure that we're ready. And then the second reason is that I really think the only thing we need to change, what really matters is outputs in any business, really. And we really could have done this, Ina, in the first week of February, if we wanted to. We could have been here with this meeting in February. We've been in a holding pattern for a while, like we've been done for a long time. And so, you know, when we look back on how we would have set the schedule if we had a year's worth of experience with it in hindsight, that time period in December and in November should be, the meat should be done by then. Then in January, we come back and go, okay, we've had sober second thought, you know, that sort of first time in January, January fourteenth or whatever, the date usually falls on. Um, we come back and we go, yeah, okay, everything we decided November, December is great. Or, you know, we've thought about some things over the break. We want to ask more questions about. That's what January, that second week of January should be for. And in February, we should be getting our documents ready and be talking to you at the first meeting in February. In my view, we could have done that this year if if we had really put it on our schedule.
Uh, just to follow up to that, to your comments, Bill. But some of these things we didn't know until now. Let's, let's just say these uh, these three things you brought forward today. They weren't available in February. We didn't know the answers to that. So I, through this process that we've had, I think the committee had lots of opportunities to ask questions. It might have been of each other. It might have been to you or it might have been to, to heads of staff, uh, to Cindy. We've had a lot of opportunities to, as you say, that sober second thought and some other ideas on it. So I think the timeframe, looking back at it now, it was all right to have that delay. Uh, just because it did allow us to get to where we are today. And I think, like, as you said, two weeks ago, we wouldn't have been at this point even.
So, and, and, and I think it's something we'll get together maybe as the Budget Committee again and, and do exactly this debate, because the question really is is the benefit of getting the budget out earlier to everybody, like say February, does it outweigh the risk of not having information that comes at this time? And you might say, and, and I might say, well, you gotta cut, have the cutoff at some point. And if we had cut it off in February, there's still lots of things we wouldn't know, even, you know, even if we waited till April. We would have still not known some things like, but there are a few things that are really interesting in the cycle, like reconciliation of third parties. They usually can get us some information in that February time period, at least an idea. And then we also know a little bit more about surplus in that time period. We have had a time to close out. Uh, close out in a, you know, in a general way, our year end, and we know generally what we're looking at. So that's true as well, Brian. So I know there's a desire to get it out earlier. And maybe the desire I'm mixing up with is getting it started earlier versus getting it out earlier. And we can have that debate. The other thing that's really important for Chris, and we're going to talk probably more about this, is what's that index called, Chris, for Asheville?
Ashbelt Cement Price Index.
Yeah, and it's amazing whenever you do, you know, you do move things forward, the things you forget you don't know about. And uh, you're right, in that February time period, there are a lot of things that come forward. So we'll have to balance those risks and see. But we literally were ready in February, which was kind, then it, for me, it was like hurry up and wait, because you want to get the information out to your team about what's happening too. So it's a, it's a balance.
Okay, thank you, uh, Councilor Rob. I'll look to um, Councilor Clark.
Um, yeah, I was also on the Budget Committee and I just want to say that it felt like we, we started earlier and we were spinning our wheels a little bit, but I think the process was very important, because we went line by line. There was a lot of questions. Um, for example, Chris's department, Chris and Bill did a real deep dive on his department, which, you know, maybe doesn't happen every year, but it's sure to happen this year. And that's what drove the dialogue for us to arrive at, looking at a potential debt strategy that Kathy alluded to. Uh, and I don't think we would have gotten to that point had we not done such a deep dive. And I appreciate you, the work you did, Chris, because it was a lot of work and uh you had to go back to the table a few times. So uh, yeah, that's all I have to say about that.
Uh, and we, it's a good point Sue's making. We did even have a question. Um, I had a question that hasn't come up yet, but it's a good one that's kind of related is um, what's so different this year? How were you able to get here from that terrible starting point this year? And you weren't able to last year, which is a really great question, because last year wasn't, that was a blip for us in terms of um, what our tax rate percentage increase was. And I would say that it, that early time period we have at the Budget Committee, where we talked about different tools and different strategies was super valuable, super valuable, like double-digit valuable in terms of tax rate increase in terms of our new approaches and, and agreeing to those new approaches. And so that was really valuable time. But then the other piece that's different, and I never want to get caught like this again, is we got run over by service demand that we had no ability to catch up to, especially in land ambulance. And that's where, if you look back at what hit us hard last year, and, and that's why I'm, I'm talking about, hey, our infrastructure plan has to be forty years. Our asset management plan has to be forty years. We can't react to things anymore. These things have to be all laid out. So in forty years, whenever we come back, or we, it's, it's all laid out for everybody. But land ambulance really ran you over. The demand went hockey stick style. The offload delays went hockey stick style on the graph. And the big problem is, I can't fix it for you because there's a one-year lag in what the province pays. So you had to pay the piper. You were a hundred percent on the hook for growth that happened in our region, in a, especially in our demographic area, um, with, and the complexity of those calls. And it took a lot to get that out of the system where the province was paying their fair share. And I, I look at that example and I say, we can't get caught in any one of our service areas, not planning for that exponential growth again. There wasn't anything we could do about it, but it wasn't a nice feeling to go out there and use up a lot of our dollars that we had stored for rainy day. And have a big number. That wasn't much fun. And everything that we've invested in this year with the group, we really spent a lot of time making sure that in no business area are we going to get caught like that again, even if it's not our fault. Like land ambulance really wasn't anybody's fault. So that, that's a really great outcome from last year to this year.
Okay, if there are another hands, I'm just going to take one minute to say, thank you to staff for all the work that you did. Uh, change is hard, because um, I mean, you get used to doing things, and even when you're looking forward and saying we can do better and we want to do better and we're going to do it this way. Actually doing it is hard, because you run into things you weren't expecting or whatever the hiccups are. Um, it'll be better next year, even if it, if we do exactly the same process, because we'll know what the process looks like. So I just want to say thank you uh for doing all of that and all of revisions and presentations. Um, I, we depend on those. So thank you. And I also like to say thank you very much to the committee, because it was uh choppy at times. And yeah, the seas get rough, they get choppy. So, and then the storm is over and then we're here. So uh, I just want to extend my thanks and um, for your effort.
That's what happens when you have an accountant and a banker on the budget.
Yeah, we get bogged down in things sometimes. So anyways, we do have a motion before us, and I'm just going to change one word there. Um, the motion that is before us is that the budget twenty twenty-four presentation be received for information. And that staff be directed to prepare a bylaw to adopt the twenty twenty-four budget as amended at the March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four meeting of County Council. Is there a mover? Councilor Clark, Councilor Rob, thank you. All in favor? And that is carried. Okay, and now we have the recommendation number two. And are you speaking? I didn't steal that.
No, okay, thanks. Um, so I was asked to just introduce this uh resolution. You want to put it up there, Greg, if you get a second? It's that second recommendation. Um, one of the discussion points that the Budget Committee was around SCORE, and they put forward this recommendation to which basically says that we're going to get out of um our, out of SCORE and provide our notice of resignation. There's a couple administrative items I have to make you aware of related to this. That is, you need to provide in the Articles of Incorporation one year's notice. So you'll probably look at this resolute recommendation and go, well, SCORE is in the budget. Well, yeah, it's in the budget, but that's because you have to provide one year's notice. And the Budget Committee considered it um, as they did every line, um, as Sue points out, and maybe a line below that. Considered SCORE as part of deliberations. And they said, um, they said a couple of things. They said that, in their view, SCORE had transitioned to more of an advise, um, advocacy role, which wasn't the original intent of why County Council got involved. It was more of an economic development engine. So they talked a little bit about that or a lot about that. They also talked a lot about the expanding role of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus into economic development and the work that they're doing there. Um, and they sort of compared notes about, okay, well, if we're going to support this group to do this, and this group to do this, where would we like to place our money? Or would we like to place it on both um, spots on the table or just one? And they came to the conclusion that they wanted to, to focus in on Western Ontario Wardens Caucus from for the work that they originally had it uh envisioned SCORE doing and did do for a long period of time. But in their view, it's, it's moved more to an advocacy role. And then the other thing that was a factor, I would say around the table, and I'm just trying to summarize the discussions the best I can, Ina, and you know, my memory is not always perfect, but they did talk as well about how it doesn't necessarily mean that local municipalities can't participate in SCORE. There are examples of where there are municipalities that feel very strongly about this and have joined SCORE in other communities whenever other counties have not. One of the thought processes there, this is a big county, uh, very big county geographically. And what um, may be of interest to Southwest and a priority to Southwest may not be the same as it is in the Northwest or Lucan or Middlesex Center. It's all over the map, especially whenever it comes to items like this. And so they tried to look at it from their various perspectives, consider the value they were getting for the amount. The, the amount is not enormous. Um, I don't think anybody's going to argue that, but the context was really around these things that they were looking at. What's the countywide value for that? Has the role changed beyond what the initial thing was? If a local municipality thinks it's important, they could do this locally. And then the rise of the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus, which you are investing increasingly um, uh, an increasing amount in in their role in economic development as the engine for regional economic development. So that's my way of trying to capture what was said. If there's other points I've missed, anybody can chime in on it, but that was the, the, how this got here. Because they said, okay, we're going to recommend that we give that notice and have that conversation with council.
So first ask, is anything missed that should be raised from the people who are on the horseshoe there? Oh, don't think. Uh, so in that case, I'll turn to the councillors and I see your hand, Councilor McMillan.
Um, thank you, Warden and Bill, and through you, you, Warden. Um, for those around the horseshoe who don't really know um, sort of what might be the overlap between WOCE and SCORE. I wonder if you could give us a, a bit of understanding on that. Um, I'm on the scoreboard. I see what they do. Um, I'm impressed by their advocacy um, across five counties. I think that even though there are uh, times or instances where it, it, it doesn't have the same impact to each county as it might to another one, take Short Line Railway, for example. But there are other aspects of it. And um, there's also been a bit of a, what I am seeing is a bit of brand recognition in terms of the um, when we sit down and meet with ministers and that sort of thing, they're, they have an understanding of, of what SCORE is and what it's doing. So I know this is a bit long, but if we could have a little bit of a, a synopsis of how they overlap. That would help my understanding. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. And through the warden to, to the councillor. Um, I, I do sit as the administrative um, staff member on the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus with the other C A Os in the region. And um, I can say there's definitely overlap uh between what we're advocating for from WOCE and, and SCORE. So that like, one example is, um, a very recent example is raising the cap on these uh, the um, electricity projects in Ontario. So everybody's advocating, NAMO would do the same and other organizations, Good Roads, for example, may, may have the same mandate. So it's, it's definitely organizations that have some shared goals with regards to those types of uh, more, not just southwestern Ontario, but more provincial-wide issues. So there's definitely strength in numbers on some of those things. Where I would say Western Ontario Wardens uh Caucus is uh, varies from SCORE, i- is that we generally don't get involved with local economic development uh, specific projects to, to the region. Um, we may do things around workforce development, do some research and study in those type of areas. They may promote uh more advocacy for things like mental health and, and well-being and, and housing in the region. Um, but for example, we, until recently, and, and it may become a priority issue for Western Ontario Words Caucus this year is transit. Um, and cohesion within the transit system across our region. So again, it's, yeah, it's, they tend to be more on the provincial uh, level, a type of issues, and then explore gets more focused um with regards to what's happening within our region, if that's making sense with that explanation.
If I may, I am on the Economic Development Committee on WOCE. Yeah, so there is a focus on that as well. And it's an integrative look to different representatives and various um, groups, sectors uh, are included at that table. I think there are probably at least twenty people at the meeting uh, two weeks ago. And they happen monthly as well. There's one coming up. I think in a week or so. Time gets strange. So, um, but in, in any case, um, that is beyond the strategic piece, there, that would be one of the pieces that is um, for WOCE. And, and the advocacy happens at a county level for county-type organizations that provide county-type services and face similar um, roadblocks and barriers. If that makes sense. So I hope that answers the question. Uh, is there an add-on that you'd like to make? No? Okay. Uh, Councilor Grant?
Yeah, it's true. You were just, how much dollars are we talking about? I was looking for the line item quickly as I was going through here for SCORE.
Is there anyone else?
And it's always thirty?
Yeah, and WOCE is thirty-five, right? Yeah.
Yeah. So the thirty thousand is essentially the membership fee. Um, it has been twenty-five since twenty-ten when we first joined the organization. And this is the first year that they've increased the membership. If that's what you want to call it, but essentially that's our buy-in to the organization.
If that's what you want to call it, but essentially that's our buy-in to the organization is thirty thousand. And then, of course, any travel and per diems for county representatives are on top of that.
I think what I was thinking of was, in my brain, was the Western Ontario Wardens Caucus one. Has it changed over time as well? Because I thought it had moved up a little bit in the last three years. Yeah.
I believe it has. And that one, those dollar amounts aren't as fresh in my mind. Because I think it was about three years ago that that, again, membership fee was increased.
Okay, is there anything else on that? Well, in that case, there is a motion before us. And that is that pursuant to section six point three of the South Central Ontario Region, that is SCORE, Articles of Incorporation. Littlesex County provide notice of resignation from SCORE. Do I have a mover and a second? Councillor Rob, councillor Brennan, call the vote. All in favor? And opposed? And that motion is carried. Okay, thank you for that. We can now move on to five point, five point eight point two, which is the AMo Social and Economic Prosperity Review. And we're going to look for a report from our.
Through you, Madam Warden, this is just an overview report on the AMo Social Economic and Prosperity Review Report. Recommending council endorse the resolution as AMo is working on great initiative for us.
I'll look to councillors, questions, comments? Seeing none. The motion before us is that AMo Social and Economic Prosperity Review Report be received for information and that Middlesex County Council formally support AMo's call for a social and economic prosperity review in the form of the resolution attached heretofore as Appendix A. Is there a mover, please? Councillor Smybert, councillor Mayhew, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And is this you too? Yeah, okay, we'll move on to five point eight three.
Through you, Madam Warden, Mr. Perrin from Central Elgin recently resigned, and Central Elgin has put forward Mr. Piggott to serve as our, the big, large Group Seven representative. And Lake Erie Region Source Protection Committee requires council's acknowledgement of the same.
Any questions? Seeing none, then the motion before us is that council supports the nomination of Alex Piggott, manager of environmental services at the municipality of Central Elgin as municipal representative for Group Seven on the Lake Erie Region Source Protection Committee. Could I have a mover, please, in a second? Councillor Rob and councillor Rickart Justin, all in favor? And that is carried. Okay, and we'll look to Ryan. There you are. Welcome, Ryan. Actually, you've got a whole stack of papers now, so we'll start with the first one. For yours.
Uh, thank you, Warden, through you to council. This first one is for the tender for installation of a guide rail. The low bid for guide rail was Royal Fence, who we have done work for. And the recommendation is that we accept their bid.
Is there any comment, question or concern? I don't see any. We have a motion before us that the county engineer be authorized and directed toward tender MH twenty-four steel beam guide rail to Royal Fence in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred dollars before taxes. And that the county engineer be authorized to execute on behalf of the County of Middlesex, all agreements and other documents necessary to implement this award. On confirmation that such agreements and other documents in form satisfactory to sister. Is there a mover, please? Councillor Clark, councillor Grantham, all in favor? And that is carried. Okay, Ryan, the floor is yours for five point eight five.
Um, thank you, Warden, through you to council. The next one will be for our latex paint tender. Sherwin-Williams was the low bid of this contract with a bid price of two million nine hundred ninety-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and eighty cents. That's a two-year term. It's a joint contract with other municipalities around us. The Middlesex County portion of this contract, seven hundred and three thousand dollars and seven hundred, seven hundred dollars um, over a two-year term. Um, it is recommended that Sherwin-Williams bid be accepted.
And thank you for that report. Again, any comments, questions? Seeing none, then a mover and a second, please. Councillor Grantham, councillor Rob, thank you, all in favor? And that is carried. Floor is yours again, sir.
Uh, next, in conjunction with the latex paint is the glass beads. Um, this was, again, was another joint purchase with us and the other surrounding municipalities. Uh, the total bid price is four hundred thousands, four hundred sixty-three thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty cents. Uh, Middlesex County's portion of this contract is eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, again, this is also a two-year bid. Um, it is with Potters Canada. They have the low bid. Um, and it is recommended that we accept their bid.
And thank you for that report. Looking for any comments, questions? Yes, councillor Rob, go ahead.
Thank you through the Warden to Ryan. I'm just wondering, on the paint and the, and the glass beads, it seems, maybe it's just my imagination, but it seems that the lines don't last way as long. Is it just there's more traffic going over this, the roads or?
Yeah, I imagine for the most part, it is. It is mainly wear and tear, the traffic that is on them. The actual paint is specified, so the paint makeup really hasn't changed over the last. I can't remember when it came out, the OPS for that, but there is a specification for what's required in that paint. So it is wear and tear on what's happening.
Is there anyone else? Seeing none. We have a motion before us to have a mover and a second. Councillor Mayhew and councillor Clark, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And now drains, subdrains contract. Go ahead, Brian.
Sorry, this is for the installation and supply of subdrains. There are, actually, there's only one, no, there are two county roads that will be receiving subdrains. Um, the low bidder was Vanbury Drainage. We've worked with them before at a low bid price of eighty-six thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, and it is recommended that we accept their bid.
Any concerns? I see no hands. Again, the motion is before us. If I could have a mover and a second, councillor Grantham, councillor Macmillan, thank you, all in favor? And that is carried. Concrete curb and gutter contract. Thank you.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. This is for the installation of concrete curb and gutter. Um, we received six bids for this tender. The low bid, we had a concern with the ability for them to do the actual work and the capacity their company had to do it. We did follow up on their, their references and their work was fine, but it was just very low quantity that they actually did. So we were, that's, that's why we're recommending that we go with the second bid, who's worked with us in the past. And that's Robot Contractors with a bid price of two hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty cents. And it's recommended that we accept their bid.
Thank you for that report. Any questions or concerns on that one? I don't see any. Move by. Councillor Smybert and councillor McGuire, thank you, all in favor? And that is carried. And hold in place asphalt recycling contract. For yours, Ryan.
Uh, thank you, Warden, through you to council. We received three bids on this contract. Uh, Levis Contracting was a low bid, a total bid price of one million, three hundred twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Um, again, we've worked with Levis in the past, and it is recommended that we accept their bid.
All right then, thank you. And any concerns on that? Seeing none. Do I have a mover and a second? Councillor Clark, councillor Rob, thank you, all in favor? And that is carried. And we're into double digits now. Number ten. Hot asphalt mix report from Brian, Ryan again.
Thank you, Warden, through you to council. This is for the hot mix asphalt contract. Uh, we received four bids this year. Uh, and this year we had a new contractor in Brant Co Construction who was the low bid uh, with a total bid price of five hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and eighty cents plus HST. Uh, Branco has not worked with Middlesex in the past. They're actually kind of new to our area, but they have worked for Elgin and Perth, I believe it is, in the past. We've checked out all of the references and see no issues with accepting their bid.
Great, thank you. Is there any question or concern? Councillor, go ahead, councillor Clark.
Yeah, I just have a comment on behalf of Adelaide MacCuff. Thank you for allowing us to participate in, in this project because it helps us have the benefit of economies of scale. And that this is such a large contract that we're able to optimize some cost savings by participating with you. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Councillor Brookhart Justin?
Thank you, through the Warden. Um, Ryan, I just wonder, there is a significant difference in the bids on these, and given that Brant Co is new and looking maybe to build a relationship with Middlesex, how satisfied are we at that, at that dollar amount?
I, I think overall, after taking a look at the work they've done and their working relationship with the other municipalities around us, I'm very confident that they'll be able to do what we require. And it, quite frankly, it's kind of nice to have a new contractor in every once in a while, especially, you know, one that has a little bit of a reputation before. We have to, have to take that contractor. Just to keep everyone, you know, the pencil sharp and get us the best prices.
Add-on? No, okay, already. Is there anyone else? Yes, councillor Clark?
Yeah, just as a follow-up to that, obviously, I'm stating the obvious, but your department is, does onsite inspections and you do analysis of asphalt and things of that nature, so I'm comfortable with that.
Would you like to respond?
No, that's correct. We do. And our staff is actually pretty, pretty well-versed in asphalt inspection, so I'm not too concerned about it.
If there are no further questions, there is a motion before us. I would look for a mover and a second. Uh, councillor Macmillan and councillor Grantham, thank you, all in favor? And that is carried. Uh, are there any inquiries? Seeing none, there are no notices of motion under councillors' comments and other business. I would look to councillor Brookhart Justin, please.
Great, and thank you through the Warden to council. Last week, on March the sixth, I had the opportunity to represent the Warden and the county at the annual London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership, All Are Welcome event. I think most of you are familiar with that organization. You likely have taken a lawn sign that represents the, that advertises their, their mandate of all are welcome. Um, the London and Middlesex Local Immigration Partnership is a community collaborative initiative, and it's funded by Refugees, Immigration and Citizenship Canada. And it really facilitates the successful integration of immigrants in our region. This event has been held for seven years, and I have had the privilege of being at a number of the events. And to their credit, they continued to hold this event during the pandemic um, and on, on a virtual platform um, because of the importance of their mandate and mission. So the theme for this year's event was same struggle, different differences, living together respectfully as a community. And it centered on the topic of intersectionality. And presentations during that day's event focused on the shared struggles and opportunities that members of different communities face. Conversations explored ways in which we can learn from each other and build a more welcoming community in our region. So it was recognized at the event that Middlesex has become a more engaged partner over the years. Um, London really is the driving force to this organization. Middlesex has always had a seat at the table. Um, but a number of times during the day, I had organizations and partners talk to me about how Middlesex has become more of an involved partner and has contributed more. And Joe Windsor is our staff representative with LMLIP. So the annual event is held at this time of year, and it's held at this time of year to recognize and prepare for the United Nations International Day for the Elimination of Racial Discrimination, which is held on March twenty-first. So it was announced at the event last week that the City of London will be issuing a proclamation on the twenty-first in recognition of that day. So in Middlesex County, we don't issue proclamations. We have a policy that we do not. But in light of this, and in light of the work and the partnership that we are doing with, um, LMLIP, I'm asking the Warden, um, if she can issue a statement in recognition and support of the city's proclamation. I would also ask that the statement speak directly to the day of the elimination of racial discrimination and the importance of recognizing the principles of equity and for standing up for them.
Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for attending on my behalf. I appreciate it. I think it was good continuity that you were there. Um, I think that's an entirely reasonable request. It will be my pleasure, and we will make it so. Hey, thank you. Is there any, oh, councillor Grantham, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Warden. And last Wednesday was a busy day, councillor Justin. In my role on London Middlesex Housing, I had the opportunity to attend the, the groundbreaking at Reimagined Southdale, which is part of, um, London Middlesex Housing was a fifty-year-old building I think about four hundred units. So they have tore down one unit and they're upgrading two hundred and sixty-five units. It's a mix of RGI, rent geared income, affordable of market rate, and also at the same time, an upgrade of some existing townhomes. But the message I want to bring to council is that the City of London has invested thirty million dollars in that project. So not at this time, but at some point in time, I'd like to challenge our council to look at reimagining some of our properties in the county. We have a hundred and fifty-nine units in the county. I do know we invest significant dollars towards the upkeep and the maintenance of those units, but I think at the appropriate time, maybe at the next uh, budget sessions, we do need to look at reimagining some of our properties. I know there's a need for more social housing, and I know we have the attainable housing report that should be coming back to us. So that's just going to be my challenge in the future to this council. Let's look at reimagining some of our properties and follow the lead of the city. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Is there anyone else? If not, I just want to take one moment and say thank you to staff and to council for your kind thoughts and the flower arrangement. Appreciate your thoughtfulness and words of sympathy. So thank you for that. Okay, now the next thing we have to do is go into committee of whole. Uh, the motion before us is that the committee of whole convene at two forty-eight PM. Is there a mover, please? Councillor Smybert, councillor Macmillan, seconding, all in favor? And that is carried. Alrighty, next up, we have delegations. Today, we have a presentation by Rosanna Wilcox. She's the interim director at London Regional Employment Services, Julie Bullock, operations manager, community employment choices, and Joe Windsor, our manager of social services, Middlesex County. When you're ready, make your way forward and the floor is yours then. Okay, okay, actually, there was a good suggestion just made. Maybe if anybody needs to take a break for just like three to five minutes max, and then we'll get set up and then we can start into the next presentation. three to five minutes max, and then we'll get set up and then we can start into the next presentation. Okay? Kara, I'm just going to get you to do a little introduction, right? Okay, it's uh two fifty-five. And we're going to get underway now just to um keep ourselves on track. Thank you. So uh Kara? Kara is going to give an introduction just uh to start us off. The floor is yours, Kara.
Thank you and through you, Warden, to council. As you appreciate, uh workforce development plays an integral role in the provision of economic development services. Being engaged in and helping to chair the Middlesex Workforce Partnership provides me with an opportunity to better understand how general and specialized employment services are supported and provided across Middlesex County. As some things have changed over the course of the past couple of years with respect to overall management of the system, many elements of the delivery have stayed the same or improved. And Cindy Howard and I, who have long worked together with the partnership, thought it important to invite this delegation to walk council through the management and delivery of employment services in their communities. With that, I'm pleased to introduce, as you have, Rosanna Wilcox, representing London Regional uh Employment Services, Julie Bullock, representing Community Employment Choices, and our own Joe Windsor to speak to you today.
Thank you kindly, Carrie. I appreciate that introduction. Uh without further ado, I'm going to turn the floor over to you so you can get started. I'm not sure who, yeah, okay.
Uh thank you and through you, Warden. I'm really pleased to be here today and with my colleagues to provide you with an overview of where we are at with employment service transformation. Um, next slide, please. Actually, you can skip right to the next one. Thank you. Okay, so this this slide may be familiar to you, but I thought we would start here as it provides you with some really important context of where we have been and where we are headed with provincial employment services transformation. So on the left uh of of the slide, you will see the system we're coming from uh pre-transformation. So where you have Employment Ontario, Ontario Works and uh Ontario Disability Support Program as three distinct uh windows uh or doors perhaps. Uh and you'll see the transformation is about moving to uh one system that provides one pathway to job seekers and employees. So um the Ministry of Labor, Immigration Training and Skills Development is the system steward of of this transformation. Uh they have moved to a Service System Manager model, and I'll talk about that a bit more in a moment. Uh but that sort of governs the uh provision of services within uh catchment areas. And then, of course, municipal service managers are still providing and holding the expertise around person-centered supports uh for social assistance clients. Uh next slide, please. This gives you a good sense of where we are at in terms of the transformation. So uh this officially, uh I believe, kicked off in conversations really began, I I think, uh with the ministry in in twenty eighteen. And then they have moved through a number of uh sort of cohorts as as they've gone through and introduced uh employment system or services transformation. So the prototype phase, you'll see who was involved there. Uh phase one, and then we are in phase two. So for for us as the London Economic Region, and that's the the catchment, um we officially moved into Integrated Employment Services as of January first of this year. And you'll see on there, uh you may have noticed the the Service System Manager model or the S S Ms. It's they're led by uh such a quite a mix of um of providers that are leading that. So you will see some uh public sector entities, uh like uh in this case, the City of London uh is is the S S M for this region. There are others like Fleming College, and then there are are private sector companies that are are leading the work as well. Um and so you can see them on that slide. And there is a phase three uh that I believe we're still waiting to hear that announced uh and that is uh with regards to uh the northeast, northwest, and also Toronto. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the vision of London Regional Employment Services, uh and you know, this sets our direction as we work together, and I think collaboration is is the center of this, is that we are a thriving, inclusive and collaborative communities where individuals unlock their potential and achieve meaningful employment and where employers have access to the talent they need. And it's the combination of those two things uh will drive transformation. And on the next slide, you will see the collective mission of of the um L R E S as well. And and really, I think it's important just to note that these were created by municipalities throughout the catchment uh and employment service providers through a collaborative process to really land on on what what does that look like and and what is our purpose as we think about employment service transformation? Next slide, please. So who are we as uh London Regional Employment Services? Uh so we're a network of service providers across uh quite a large region. So uh there are twenty-one service providers over forty-five locations in the area. Um and this includes Algen County, Middlesex County, Oxford, uh the City of St. Thomas, and the City of London. Uh and it really, it's about working and sort of harnessing the expertise and experience of our local service providers to ensure that we are delivering delivering uh client-centered and locally-based services to to support job seekers and employers. And next slide, oh, perfect. Thank you. Uh and here are the Middlesex-specific service providers and and Julie, of course, will dive into this a little deeper, but this um happy to answer any specific questions you may have, but I think I will pass it over to Joe.
Yeah, thanks for the and through you, Madam Warden, to the council. Um if we go to the next slide for me, please. So I'm going to discuss a little bit about the uh impact to the Ontario Works and Social Services Department within uh Middlesex County. So I'm going to take you a look back a little bit to prior to January first, was uh Rosanna pointed out, that's when the uh full E S T or the Employment Services Transformation came into play. And just kind of give you a walkthrough of what kind of uh what the Ontario Works caseworkers would do prior to and then what they're going to be doing now, which will be on the next slide. So the caseworkers uh would first uh, oh, sorry, thanks, uh would first um go through and determine the financial eligibility for a individual or family that they are working with. From there, they would start uh then from there, they would go on to having more kind of the in-depth employment discussions. So they would uh work with the client to determine what is the best and most successful path for them to employment. So they created an outcome plan. They had the general discussions around employment, which uh employment agency would they refer to? Um and but they would really dive in a little bit deeper to discuss around what job search skills, what employment, or sorry, educational planning that they might have, and then really help determine which referral would be best to the Employment Ontario site. On top of that, they also reviewed what is called employment-related expenses, which are those kind of expenses like transportation. It could be for work clothing. It could be many different things that were related directly to the uh employment and their success through the Employment Ontario when they made any referrals over there. Um the caseworker then would also continue to provide the financial support. So I just put up there again as a reminder for what a single individual would receive through Ontario Works. So it's three hundred and forty-three dollars in basic needs and three hundred and ninety dollars for shelter. So seven hundred and thirty-three in total for an individual that uh is accessing Ontario Works. The caseworker would also uh provide uh community supports that are needed that if there's mental health, addiction, uh could be again educational, whatever the community support uh that the case the individual would need, the caseworker would refer to those outside agencies. Um if you can go to the next slide for me. So this is what it kind of looks like as of uh January first, twenty twenty-four. Uh it hasn't uh greatly changed, I would say, in the fact that our caseworkers already did a lot of this work prior to. It just with some of the changes to the employment side of things, we are not dealing with the direct employment services like we were in the past. So with uh employment service services transformation, it is actually part of a larger service uh social systems modernization for all of Ontario Works and Social Services across the province. Um so things like centralized intake was part of it and our electronic document management, uh which we now are um basically almost paperless. We're getting there. Um but uh so employment services transformation was kind of the next step for us. So the caseworkers still determine the financial eligibility for clients, um but it is through the I B A U, which is the intake benefit um administration unit, which is the the centralized intake. The caseworkers then uh review the information, determine if the the client is still eligible. There are some clients that are uh auto-granted and other clients that do uh still get referred back to uh our office as a as an immediate review where caseworkers have to go through the full application. Part of that now uh is that they also have to complete what's called a common assessment. A common assessment is kind of going through what barriers and supports might a client need um for their employment path or whatever path it is that they um may be going. So it could be to uh education and be applying for O S A P, could be going to the Ontario Disability Support Program. There's a couple of different paths that that folks um uh may be going, but one of the main things is for the common assessment to we do the part one of it, and then the part two is completed by the Employment Ontario site, which I will let Julie talk about that in a minute. Uh one of the other pieces that um the caseworkers now complete is called a mental health and addiction screener. And it is a set of questions that uh do delve really deep into what's going on with that client, and it is intended to uh make sure that we're providing the right services and supports and referrals to our community partners that are out uh within Middlesex County. Uh they complete an action plan, so it's kind of that replaces the outcome plan, which the action plan again is in coordination and with the uh client to make sure that we're working with them on what it is that their life goals are. And instead of employment-related expenses, we do have uh participation expenses, which those expenses would be for other things that might be those pre kind of employment steps that the client might need before they can be moved to uh Employment Ontario. And then uh as well, just the financial supports, and I put up there on what a single individual would receive on Ontario Works. Have to go to the next slide for me, please. And as uh any new process, there's always some challenges and some opportunities. Um you know, uh this team here has been fantastic to work with. So our friends in uh L R E S and at our Employment Ontario sites across Middlesex County have been fantastic to work with to try to make sure that there's no impact to the clients that we're serving, that it's a seamless process. Yes, there's lots of backend stuff that we're dealing with, but it shouldn't be impacting the clients that we're serving and working with these three individuals and other organizations in the county have been fantastic. Um so some of the challenges are around the the funding for stability and employment supports. Uh we did not receive, as you probably saw in the budget, uh we did not uh receive any additional funding. We actually lost some funding uh during this transformation. Uh so we are working well with our Women Ontario site and L R E L R E S to ensure that there's benefit coordination so that we're working on maximizing all of the funding that's available between each of us to make sure that, again, it's a seamless uh path for clients and there's no impact to them. Uh clients are now, so one of the big steps uh was was uh around deferred clients and in the past, there were, we did have a a lot of clients that were deferred, who we are now making sure that we're taking that step back and really meeting where that client is. The caseworkers have already always been doing a great job with that. Now with the employment side of things kind of being taken off their plate, they can really work with those clients uh on an individual basis. And we want to see to make sure that they move towards if it's employment or if it's whatever it is to just increase, you know, their um um the the benefits of their own own life. We want to make sure that uh uh that they're doing well in in their in their in their path. And uh the last thing is just some limited access to stability supports within the county. Um we have uh been working really well with our community partners to ensure that if uh organizations say that they support London and Middlesex, that uh we ensure that the organization is actually supporting folks in Middlesex County in their home community and not having individuals uh have to go to London to to access those services. So still some challenges, but we uh are definitely making some inroads on that side of things. And when we look at the uh opportunities, and this is kind of a a broad opportunities between all of our offices. Um so the uh flexibility to adapt the programming to special needs that um uh that we see, especially with our Ontario Works clientele. Some of the individuals that we are referring to, the Employment Ontario site, um may uh have some uh extra challenges or extra sports, and so we are able to work within our employment point Ontario sites to make sure that we're uh supporting the clients where they're at. Uh then we have some clarity of roles between the differences of uh where Ontario Works workers land and where the uh Employment Ontario Employment Advisors land as well. And we're able to be responsive to the local needs and uh And we're able to be responsive to the local needs and uh regional needs uh through London Employment, sorry, London Regional Employment Services to ensure that uh Middlesex County's voice is also being heard at that table. Uh, one of the reasons for here is the partnerships with our the economic development between uh London uh Middlesex, Elgin, and Oxford as well. And also the be able to focus more on the employer's needs and supports. So um, I will let Julie continue on with her her part around employment Ontario, which I'm sure she'll dive a little bit more into some of these opportunities as well. Thank you.
Okay, Joe. And through you, Warden and Counselors. Alongside Cassie Hodgins, Employment Services Manager, and as part of the L R E S Network of Services, we lead a team of employment professionals committed to assisting job seekers and employers in Middlesex County. Sorry, can we go to the next slide? Thank you. Community Employment Choices, also referred to as C E C, is sponsored by Quad County Support Services based in Wardsville, under the leadership of Linda Long, Executive Director, and Quad County's Board of Directors. Since nineteen ninety nine, C E C has worked diligently to ensure Middlesex residents access no cost, quality employment services in their communities. We prioritize rural support, understanding the importance of local needs. Based in Strathroy, we have established service locations countywide, including use of space at several county library locations. Next slide, please. Resource and Information Assistance, also known as R N I, is available to anyone in our community, whether they wish to access it independently or as part of their assisted employment journey. C E C prioritizes providing exceptional customer service and education to those seeking assistance. Self-service options include computer, telephone access, labor market information, as well as guided phone support. R N I can also serve as a gateway to other community partner services. We emphasize collaboration with all providers within the L R E S Network, as well as various community partners, to ensure individuals receive appropriate services and connections. Next slide. C E C works with job seekers to create individualized employment action plans tailored to their needs. These plans may include intensive job search support, resume development, interview preparation, and career planning, which includes exploring apprenticeship and trades as viable career pathways. Job development is crucial for individuals with barriers in entering the labor force and needing new opportunities. This may involve connecting job seekers with employers looking for their skills. C E C's job developers collaborate closely with the Middlesex County business community to build positive relationships, which we believe is essential for the economic health of the community that we serve. Next slide. In Ontario, we have access to a range of training and retraining opportunities. Better Jobs Ontario helps individuals reenter their workforce quickly. Expanded in twenty twenty two, it targets those facing challenges in finding stable roles, including those experiencing seasonal layoffs, needing skills for in-demand occupations, gig workers, youth, and people on social assistance. The Canada Ontario Job Grant enables businesses of all sizes to invest in their workforce. It supports short-term training for both existing and new employees, providing up to ten thousand dollars per person for training costs, with employers contributing one-third of the total. Information can be provided when relevant to job seekers with regards to skills development programming. Additionally, we offer client referrals to literacy and basic skills programming. C E C houses the gateway programming on a weekly basis through the Thames Valley District School Board, facilitating numerous successful high school completions and academic upgrading. Next slide. As part of the L R E S Network, C E C can provide financial support for both job seekers and employers. In addition to the Canada Ontario Job Grant discussed on our previous slide, employers may access financial support when hiring. While these incentives may not cover all onboarding costs, they facilitate discussions around the hiring process and can contribute to successful new hire retention. This will benefit both job seekers and employers. Financial supports are also available to assist job seekers to remove temporary barriers to participating in the labor market. Examples of supports can include costs associated with interview transportation, work-appropriate clothing, emergency childcare, among other potentials. Warden, Council, this is a brief highlight of employment services offered in Middlesex County. On behalf of the L R E S Network, I would like to take a moment and thank Cara Finn and Cindy Howard for inviting our delegation to speak today. We appreciate the opportunity to share the important work that is being done within the county. Your support and interest in our efforts to serve Middlesex County job seekers and employers is truly valued.
Well, thank you for that report. There's a lot of content in there. I'm sure we'll have some questions. Cindy, did you want to add anything before we get into specifics?
Uh, through the Warden to Council, I just want to say, great presentation. Um, you heard our C I O talk about partnerships during the budget discussion, and this is a perfect example of a partnership. Um, this team has been working very closely together in the last uh number of months, and it's very exciting. And we're really looking forward to all of the services and the programs that our residents are going to be able to receive in the County of Middlesex. And just like to thank you very much for your leadership and uh your presentation, and look forward to see where this goes.
Thank you, Cindy. I will look now to Counselors for questions, comments. Uh, go ahead, Counselor Smiber.
Yes, I want to thank you for your presentation. You're obviously doing some really great things within our community. I'm just wondering, is there an opportunity for municipalities to help get the message out? So that residents in our communities know that they've got this viable service right in their backyard. So how can we help? We want to help.
Great question. Thank you. So one thing I think is important for everyone to know that these services exist in many communities throughout each one of your municipalities. So that's the very first thing to note. And it is very important to each one of us sitting here that individuals do not have to travel far to access those services. So that's the most important thing. Um, I do believe that we would like to approach um as a delegation, each one of your individual municipalities, and just speak maybe at right at the local level, so that every council sitting at your tables is aware of the services that are being offered. And then just for you to spread the word, uh, make sure that you're being the connector, point towards your you know, work in Middlesex is a a site that we all support, and there's a lot of really good information on that. And that does lead back to sites such as uh uh entities within the network. And uh, it's just keep the conversations rolling.
And through you, Warden, if I can add to that, I I think there there's a piece, we're in the process of building out sort of the the brand presence as well of L R E S. So that may be an opportunity as well that you can easily direct to. There's, there'll be a sort of a self-select function in there, right? So you could, if a resident is uh assessing where they might uh get service, you can go address-based, you know, geography, those types of things, or or certainly L R E S can help uh in that and to connect you uh with the great providers uh like C E C and and the many others in the in the catchment.
Thank you. Other questions? Uh, Counselor Rob, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the Warden, uh, it's more of a comment to use, and that is uh the part I find very interest interesting and and is the job retention piece of it, and the fact that helping people when they get a job with clothing, with that type of thing. Because from a past life and in what I used to do, it could be in a manufacturing setting. It could be a bone of contention, bone of frustration, I think, a little bit where people want to work, they can't afford to get a job almost. And so it's up to employers to outfit these people and stuff. And it's just, it's good to see some just that job retention piece and that coaching and the help with that. The people who want to work have the opportunity. I I applaud that part of it.
Anyone else? Okay, um, Counselor, um, yeah. Oh, okay, I'll start with that's a regular.
Thank you, Madam Warden. Uh, I'm from Southwest Middlesex. We recently had uh Cooper Standard uh moved back to the U S. Uh, significant number of employers, uh, employees out of out of work. Uh, not in its heyday. There used to be three hundred workers at that plant. I think it whittled down to about a hundred. Uh, do you go on site uh to uh address some of these unemployment circumstances?
Thank you. And through you, Warden, that is a that's a very good question. Um, we are on site. Uh, we have been working closely since last summer to monitor that situation. And we have been providing services both out of our office and out of the um, Action Center that's happening in Glencoe at the moment. And we have been there as much as possible. We've been there every week for the last few weeks. And we do have a plan in motion to be there to support those individuals, at least till the end of this year.
Okay, Madam Warden, I'd just like to express my thanks for that too. Uh, I'm aware of the work you do. And uh, it's uh certainly a benefit to those in the community who have lost that. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Castor Mayhew. Counselor Jess.
Great. And thank you through the Warden, Alaco, what my colleague said. It was a great presentation. And um definitely want to thank you for uh the work that you do do to support uh those in our community that require it, and certainly looking forward to coming to the local municipalities. I think that this is great um to have that communication at the local level. I do want to go back maybe to some of the slides that Joe spoke to, because it is a transformation. There are challenges. There are opportunities. And um anytime, you know, we go through changes as to how things are delivered and who's working with who. Um, I'm always looking to make sure that we have lessons learned and that we are keeping appropriate data. Because really, I want to ensure that, you know, a year from now, when we've kind of assessed the transformation, um, that those that we are actually trying to service and trying to um support are actually getting the same support that they were um prior to January first. Um, so I guess it's probably I, because I I think I know what the answer is going to be, but I've got to ask it anyways. You know, are we um, you know, uh documenting, you know, what is happening throughout this transformation? So that we can ensure that, you know, people aren't getting lost and that the supports are getting um to who they need to be and how they need to be.
Thank you. And through the uh Warden, um, excuse me. Uh, so we do have a data and research analyst that uh has been collecting some of the data on um caseload size. And we are also now getting uh reports on a monthly basis through the common assessment and through the mental health and addiction screener to see where people are and how they're moving forward. Um, I think it is something, it's a great question to make sure that we are ensuring that, you know, if we see a spike in our caseloads, what is the the need and what is the uh, where's the gap in that? I think working with our our uh folks at Employment Ontario as well to make sure that people don't fall through that. And you know, if somebody's not attending an appointment, why? What's going on? How are we moving that forward? What services are being provided that, you know, through Ontario Works and our Social Services Team that may have been missed or or there's the gap now going forward? So we do have some data that uh we are start starting to collect. Um, but I don't have any that I can share at this time, so.
Thank you. And I I will add to that. Um, L R E S certainly, I mean, that is part of of the work and the and the approach, right, that we're evidence-based and and informed in our decision-making. So there's a high level of um data collection. And I think as an S S M, we have a a view of the entire catchment as well. And I think, you know, working collaboratively as we strive for the, you know, that collective vision and mission, it can be informed by those pieces. And I think that's that's really key, whether you're looking at that at a you know, there's a lot of monthly monitoring to quarterly to annual, what do you roll up? And and we really prioritize that we build in a a continuous improvement approach into that, that it's sort of baked into the work. Because that's absolutely it, right? We're going to learn and we're going to grow, and we're sort of at a high uh state of change, change on all sides. When you look at uh the various systems that are now coming together into one stream. And and so there's lots of lessons in that. But I think what's also exciting is uh collectively, we have that tool of of program design. So you do have levers available to adjust and address uh opportunities and challenges as they arrive and and centered on that data that we can collect. And there's, yeah, there's, there are many uh pieces. And I think we're learning too in these early days of of uh integrated employment, but there there's a lot of opportunity there.
Is there anyone else? I don't see any hands. I just thought I'd make a quick comment too. Actually, I guess things happen in threes in my head quite often. Um, we talk about evidence-based and and lessons learned. That gives me hope. It says when we're doing change, that you're actually looking at what you're doing and what's working and what's not. And saying this is new, we can do it better this way. Oh, wait a minute, we just learned this, we can improve on that. So that that's really a hopeful message for me. The other part of it was that uh you used a couple of words, partnership and integration. That integrated thinking treating people as whole people and making sure all the needs are met. And the partnership between organizations that are able to to um add certain expertise. That too gives me hope. So that was great. And then the final um pieces, of course, I I'm looking forward to a local visit. I think the more people know about this and can spread the word and work together. I mean, we have people who connect with people every day too. So um, I guess it's win-win-win, right? So thank you so much for your time. I appreciate your input and trying to put a lot of content together to make sense. I really appreciate that. So on behalf of Council, thank you for what you're doing, and we'll look forward maybe to an update in a year or so. So thank you. Now, moving on. Um, we do have a motion with respect to the presentation um that this at the that the Employment Services Transformation, available employment services in Middlesex County presentation be received for information. Uh, Counselor Burkhard, Justin, and Counselor um McMillan, thank you, uh, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. Alrighty, uh, we don't have any reports from officers. Um, we do have a couple of action items. I'm going to look to um Brent Kermit, our Stratford Lodge Administrator, to present the um accountability agreement, the annual declaration. The floor is yours, Brent.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Council. Um, this is an annual item that appears before Council, has appeared before Council for seven years now. And just to remind Council, the Lodge has a a service accountability agreement known as an L S A with uh Ontario Health, um, and that requires an annual council-approved declaration of compliance with the agreement, and that's using Appendix E of the L S A, which is attached to my report. But the actual L S A document is a forty-page requirement of all long-term care homes and other health service providers in the province. And um it spells out a host of requirements for us to adhere to uh in terms of ensuring the continued flow of provincial funding. And so it includes things like uh what financial, clinical um and and statistical information has to be reported to the province and and when throughout the year. Uh, so I, as Lodge Administrator, administrator, am certified, to the best of my knowledge, and believe that the Lodge fulfilled its obligations under the service agreement for twenty twenty-three. And I'm therefore recommending that the Declaration of Compliance Document be approved before signing by the Warden on behalf of the county. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Brent. Counselors, are there any questions, comments? I don't see any hands, so uh we do have a motion before us. If I could have a mover, please, in a second, or Counselor Grantham, Counselor Smiber, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. And the floor is yours again for the um long-term uh care compliance inspection report.
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Council. Uh, so the Lodge had a four-day Ministry of Long-Term Care Inspection Visit in late January, early February, uh, the purpose of which was to review four what are called critical incident reports that the Lodge submitted to the Ministry in the last six months, and to review a complaint to the Ministry from a family member of a Lodge resident. Three of the four critical incidents involved resident falls, which resulted in injury and a transfer to hospital. So that's reportable to the Ministry. And another critical incident involved a resident-to-resident altercation. Um, so the Ministry reviews all critical incidents reported by long-term care homes and reviews complaints submitted to the Ministry through the Provincial one eight hundred number set up for long-term care. Uh, the inspection including uh included a review of the Lodge's false prevention program, which we're required to have as part of our legislation. And it included things like reviewing relevant health records. Uh, so I'm pleased to report to Council that the inspection visit did not result in any ministry findings of Lodge non-compliance with our provincial long-term care home legislation. Happy to address any questions on the inspection.
Thank you for that report, then. Um, does anyone have a question, comment? I, oh, go ahead, Counselor Rob.
Uh, thank you. Through the Warden to Brent. Brent, how, when they come and do an inspection on that type of thing, do they interview staff or and residents or families, or what is the process? Brent, how, when they come and do an inspection on that type of thing, do they interview staff or, and residents or families or what is the process?
Through, uh, the warden to the council, all or the above. Um, they will talk to residents, they will interview residents, interview families. Um, depending on the type of inspection, they will talk to representatives of our residence council and, and our family council, both of which we have and both of which are requirements of our legislation.
Anything else? Uh, something occurred to me. Um, the, my question is, you had four people came, spent four days going through a number of items. Do they do this once a year? They wait for these? Or is this within X days of something, then they have to be there?
So there are different types of inspections. Um, you, council will recall in September of last year, what we had was what's called a, a proactive inspection. So that's a, that's a very comprehensive inspection where we'll get visitors for a week or so and they will re, uh, review everything, all aspects of the organization. Um, this time, uh, or with this inspection, what, uh, the ministry does is concentrate on, again, these critical incident reports. So, um, we have a list of what, what are called critical incidents in our legislation. So things like falls that result in a hospitalization, allegations of abuse, missing residents or missing unaccounted-for narcotics, um, outbreaks, um, emergencies such as fires, all of those are considered, um, critical incidents. We must report to the ministry and the ministry will always follow up on those reports. They might show up in a week, they might show up in six months from now, but they will always show up and, and, uh, review those critical incidents. Um, in this case, they came for not only critical incidents, but they came for a complaint, which again is a typical, um, inspection visit. Um, and then they will just come up when, uh, when they think, um, they need to follow up on items. If we were in fact, or did have, um, findings and we needed to address those findings, they would do a follow-up visit to make sure that we've addressed those findings.
Super. Thank you. Um, if there are no more questions, then the motion, um, that the Ministry of Long-Term Care Compliance Inspection Report be received for information. Um, thank you, uh, Counselor Mayhew and, uh, oh, Counselor McMillan, thank you. Any, all in favor? And none opposed, that is carried. Thank you. Okay, um, next we have a report from Dirk Vanderworth, Director of Planning and Development. The floor is yours when you're ready, Dirk.
Thank you through the warden. Uh, this is a residential plan of subdivision, uh, in Strathroy in the west end of Strathroy along County Road thirty-nine. Relatively large, uh, development with a mix of units, including single-detached, uh, semi-detached, street-facing townhouses and also blocks with internal townhouses. And, um, so there's the plan of subdivision before you. And then there's also an official plan amendment. And you'll counsel will recall that, uh, these lands were previously owned by the county. And so the official plan designation reflects that previous community facility designation. And so it needs to change to something that would allow the private sector to just develop it as, as normal. Uh, there's also a technical requirement. There's a secondary planning requirement in, um, Strathroy Care Doc's official plan, and this is the last property in that area. So there's no need for secondary planning exercise, uh, in this particular case. So the official plan amendment would deal with both of those. So my report is, um, at a high level, uh, gives you an overview of the planning policies. The more detailed reports are attached, uh, locally. I would note that we did, of course, undertake an agency ministry and First Nations circulation. And, uh, the matters that were addressed or either the identified matters were either addressed or can be addressed through the draft plan conditions which are attached. So in the end, I am recommending approval of both the official plan and the plan of subdivision. And it is my view that they are consistent with the provincial policy statement. It does do conform with the county's official plan. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I'm looking for questions. Any comments, concerns? And seeing none, there is a motion before us. If I could have a mover please, Counselor Grantham and Counselor, um, McGuire, all in favor? And that is carried. Alrighty, and we have, um, a quotation for roads, did I miss something? Oh, here we go. Quotation for roadside weed spraying, um, another report from Ryan. Well, Chris is going to do this.
Yeah, Madam Warden, we decided to give Ryan a bit of a break. Uh, he, he did enough reports earlier today. So, um, uh, this is our annual, uh, quotation for, uh, roadside weed maintenance. Uh, this is, uh, a partnership with Strathroy Care Doc, Adley Metcalf and Middlesex Center. So mostly towards the western side of the county. Uh, the county's cost in this program is thirty-four thousand, one hundred dollars and sixty cents. I would note this does, is not directly, uh, addressing Fragmities. It's a separate program that we run that's separate from this, um, roadside weed maintenance, uh, that we do every year. And we're recommending that the quotation submitted by Green Stream be accepted.
Thank you. Uh, is there anything anyone like to clarify? I don't see any hands. Um, there is a recommendation before us. Oh, sorry. I didn't see your hand, Counselor.
That's okay. Through you, um, uh, Warden to eat, to Chris. Chris, when, when they go and spray, uh, you, you, from time to time, you'll see people with a nose spray and that sort of thing. How, how are those things handled? As soon as you see the sign, you pass by or what's the procedure?
Yeah, it's a great question. Through the warden to, to the counselor. Um, we do promote and advertise in accordance with the regulations. Let people know if they are, are requesting that the roadside spray not occur, uh, along the fringe of their property. Uh, we do, uh, make best attempts to notify them to put up the signage. And essentially what they need to do is put up a sign on either end of their property so that the weed sprayers know where to start and stop. Sometimes it's quite obvious, other times it is not. Uh, and again, we do get questions from time to time from property owners. But, uh, anyone listening who is in any of these municipalities who may have concerns, uh, again, just please, as much direction as you can, give to the operators of the equipment. Uh, they're very courteous, uh, in- individuals. We've had great experience with them and, and they do, uh, are mindful of areas where people do not want to have the weed spray happen.
Alrighty. I don't see any additional hands, uh, so that motion is, uh, before us. If I could have a mover, thank you, Counselor Clark and uh, Counselor Rob, thank you. All in favor? And that is carried. And the next one is yours too. Um, this is a report on paving and asphalt recycling contracts.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Warden. And I just wanted to say at the outset of this report, uh, that, uh, I wanted to express my thanks to Ryan Hillinger and to, uh, and to Josh and our purchasing, uh, they both worked together uh, on a lot of these contracts that all came in at the same time. So, uh, in my opinion, job well done from, uh, from county staff perspective. So every year we, we like to give a, a bit of a, an audit of what we're seeing in the marketplace with regards to what we expected when we put our biggest two contracts of the year, which are generally our ash pot place, excuse me, Colden Place Asphalt Recycling and our hot mix asphalt contracts. Kind of a bit of a perfect world from our hot mix asphalt perspective. One that we talked about earlier, new contractor in the area, uh, getting a bit of a foothold, uh, in our region and had a very competitive bid, uh, certainly not in a realm of where, uh, there are concerns at a staffing level that they are going to have to cut corners to meet their, uh, contract obligations. But certainly are, uh, in a position that we, we're due to save quite a bit of money. And in the report is disseminated that our staff estimate was about fourteen percent over the bid presented by Branco. Uh, e- essentially the second low bid would have only been a six percent deviation from, is generally pretty good. The, the other thing that we've seen, and we talked about it during our budget, uh, discussions, is we've seen a relatively warm winter. So that certainly has an impact on the, uh, predicted value of oil moving into the spring and early summer period. So because the demand for oil is lower, there is certainly stock piles and supply that are going to be available. We're not expecting to see, uh, as much as we can try to predict it, we're not expecting to see, uh, the spike that we normally see happen when the construction season starts. We expect a more gradual increase to that. Contractors are thinking about that as well in, in their bid prices, which is why they came in lower than what we expected. Now, that being said, certainly see things that happen in the world today, more sort of unexpected events like the war in Ukraine, the war in, in, in Israel and those type of, uh, and actually some more activity around some, um, pirates, things happening in the Red Sea, which has diverted some of the oil production, uh, in some of the O P E C countries. That will eventually see an impact in the supply of asphalt cement. So we will likely not realize those full savings. We will likely be paying more than what was bid in the contracts due to what we've always included, which is a mechanism by which we don't hold contractors hostage to a oil price. The day the contract is bid, we pay them based on the value of oil the day that that asphalt is laid on the road. It equals to around five percent of the unit cost of, of our, um, our paving contracts. Um, but again, it can be a significant swing. We've seen that in the past. So, um, that's good news on our side, but it's, it's not all, um, hundred percent positive. We will actually not be in that fourteen percent reduction by the end of the summer and we'll keep you updated on that. The other side is at Colden Place Asphalt Recycling. The last couple of years, we've seen, uh, the prices sort of normalize to between six and ten percent higher than what we've been estimating in the past. Staff continuously monitor this and make adjustments. Uh, we speak to contractors and to, uh, other uh, uh, of our counterparts and other counties, uh, in the area. Uh, and again, I think that the numbers have settled in from Colden Place Asphalt Recycling. So staff will make an adjustment to expect slightly higher prices in the future on that side of our program. I just would note, there is no asphalt cement price index adjustment in our cold, cold in place asphalt, uh, recycling contract, simply because the timeline is so compressed. They do it all right at the beginning of the season. So they're likely going to see, uh, a pretty stable number with regards to the asphalt cement that they use in their cold, uh, recycled mix. Um, so the report recommendation is that we continue to proceed with our capital program as prescribed in the, in the approved budget. But be happy to answer any questions about either of these contracts.
Hey, thank you for that. I'll look at counselors for questions. Uh, seeing none. Make sure, none? Yes. Okay. So the motion, um, is before you, uh, in the mid, uh, agenda. If I could have a mover please and a second or Counselor Brennan and Counselor, uh, Grantham, all in favor? And that's carried. Thank you. Alrighty, moving on now to correspondence. Items and information items. I'll just look to, um, are there any here that anyone wants to comment on or pull? Yes, go ahead, Counselor Grantham.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Nine, six, nine, seven and nine, eight, all three together, if I may. I just, can I comment? Are you, yep.
Floor is yours.
Fine. No, I listen, I, uh, someone, um, we just almost completed their second municipal budget and then watching the, the budget that we had to go through here. I'm, I'm pleased to see higher levels of government take up the call for more equitable funding in municipalities. It's not something that, um, would have been on my radar screen up to a year and a half ago about the inequity in taxation and what we pay for, that possibly the province should pay for. So I just want to echo the words and that I, I thank others for taking up the, the trumpet on that because it's something as a small municipality, we can't do ourselves. So it's good to see as a collective that the voices are starting to be heard. So just want to make that comment that I'm really appreciative of others taking up the voice for us on that. Thank you.
Is there anything else? I don't see any more hands. Uh, the motion before us is that uh, items nine D one through D twenty-six be received for information. And is there a mover? Uh, Counselor McGuire, Counselor Smibert, all in favor? And that is carried. Thank you. All right, and that takes us to my six. Yes. So now we can move on to bylaws. Uh, we have five of them. The motion before us is that a bylaw to confirm the proceedings. Oops, I skipped over one for all of these. Here it is. That one. Yep. Yep. So the, the first motion is the bylaw to confirm the proceedings of March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Um, that the bylaws be given a first and second reading. A mover please. And a second or Counselor McMillan and Counselor Smibert, all in favor? That is carried. And that the bylaws be given third and final reading. Mover please, Counselor Rob. Thank you. Counselor, Albert Cartesson. All in favor? And that is carried. And then, uh, announcements. I'll start with you, Cindy.
Thanks, um, and through the warden to council. So today I'm very excited that Middlesex County received additional money from the Ministry of Transportation, talking about other levels of government giving funding, um, to operate a new community transportation route. This funding is for the year April, two thousand and twenty-four to March of two thousand and twenty-five, and we received two hundred and eighty thousand. This new route will connect Dorchester to London to St. Thomas. And it's scheduled to begin operations on Monday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. This new route will provide commuter commuters with four round trips daily, two in the morning and two in the afternoon, running from Monday to Saturday. And this new route will be provided by Voigo, who does our current two routes now. This new route will start at the Flight Exec Center in Dorchester, passing through key destinations such as Wilton Grove Industrial Park and White Oaks Mall in London with the final stop in St. Thomas Transit Hub. This will allow increased access to major employment centers. Middlesex County Connect aims to meet the diverse transportation needs in the region. This new route underscores our commitment to promoting the importance of community transportation. A one-way trip will continue to cost that five dollars. This new route, of course, is in addition to the two routes that we currently have. The warden, Anam and myself have already met with the mayor of St. Thomas and we have an upcoming meeting with the mayor of London. This is another example of a key partnership in our community. At the next county council, um, we will be doing a more fulsome presentation on the entire community transportation, including all three routes. And at this time, I'd like to, uh, answer any questions if you have them. The reason I really wanted to come today and talk about this, I thought it might come up during budget, but we're already starting to get media attention on this and we'd really like to be able to put out a media release. You might see something tomorrow with C B C. Um, so I thought it was important that I talked to council and made you aware.
Does anyone have any question or comment on that? I know it's kind of outside, but it's news. Okay. Uh, seeing no hands, then the, the rest of the announcements are very standard. Our next meetings are coming up on March twenty-sixth, April ninth and the fourteenth. And you should know April ninth, April ninth meeting is going to include a, um, annual community planning and facility collaboration opportunities meeting between, uh, Thames Valley District School Board and the county. And that'll be, as I said, on the ninth. So with that, then we come to the end of our agenda. Um, a motion to adjourn at three forty-eight P M. Counselor Perk, Justin, Counselor McMillan, all in favor?